And welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of November 26, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Peacock, Councilmember Montoya, Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Hinkle, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Dixon, Mayor Heikala.
I am here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance, and I see some scouts up there. Would you guys like to come up and help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, please? Come on up, guys. All right, good-looking ones. You remember how it starts, right? Put your hand on your heart. Okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys. Item one, proclamations. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, December 14, 2024, is National Reefs Across America Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, December 14, 2024, is National Reefs Across America Day in the city of Norman, whereas Reefs Across America is a national nonprofit organization founded in 2007 to continue and expand the annual reef-laying ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery begun by Maine businessman, Moro Worcester, in 1992. And whereas Reefs Across America's mission is to remember the fallen, honor those who serve, and teach the next generation about the true cost of freedom. And whereas Reefs Across America is made up of more than 4,700 participating locations across the country run by dedicated volunteers looking to share the mission to remember, honor, and teach through annual reef-laying ceremonies each December in awareness and education events throughout the year. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, December 14, 2024, as Nations Reefs Across America Day in the city of Norman, and extend thanks and appreciation to our veterans and Gold Star families for their service and sacrifice, and to Reefs Across America for bringing this honor to our community. I'd like to recognize Diane Nito. Come down and visit us here.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council members for honoring Reefs Across America by acknowledging December the 14th at 10:00 a.m. My name's Larry Myers. I'm the president of the Warren Cemetery at Brookhaven Board, and I'd like to thank the fellow board members that are here this evening to accept this honor. And I think it's important that we acknowledge the dedication and service of the many individuals that have served and are serving in the military and were honored for Warren Cemetery to be a part of this year. The last day to purchase a wreath for $17 to honor a veteran is at December the 2nd at 10:00 p.m., and there's a QR code in the back that will allow you to make that purchase, and we greatly appreciate the city's acknowledgement this evening. Thank you so much.
Item number two, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, November 30, 2024, is Small Business Saturday in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Norman, whereas the city of Norman, Oklahoma celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday 2023. And whereas Norman, Oklahoma supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Norman, Oklahoma, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and to help us celebrate its 15th year and continue to encourage our residents to shop small throughout the year. I'd like to recognize Ashley Jackson of Apple Tree Chocolates to accept this proclamation.
thank you for this opportunity to celebrate the small but mighty businesses that make our city one of a kind. Small Business Saturday is all about honoring the dreamers, doers, and dedicated locals who pour their passion into their work. These businesses are where our community comes together, whether it's over coffee, clothes, or maybe even dessert. As co-owner of Apple Tree Chocolate, I'm proud to sweeten our city not just with treats but with moments of joy and connection. Our shop is more than a business. It's a place where memories are made and celebrations are shared. This resolution reminds us that every time we shop small, we're building a stronger community. Each local purchase supports families, sparks growth, and strengthens the heart of our city. So let's keep supporting the small businesses, not just this Saturday, but all year round. Thank you, mayor, councilmembers, and everyone who believes in the power of local. Together, we're crafting a thriving, connected community, one small business at a time. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with one.
Keep it pretty short. First and foremost, everybody have a very safe, very happy, and very blessed Thanksgiving holiday for you that are traveling. Like to just be safe, follow the speed limit, and drive to arrive. So, next, Firehouse Arts Center has some amazing programs going on for the holidays. They have veterans' classes, classes for kids. A lot of these are free. They have so much going on right now. I didn't write it all down, but check out their website. Go see what's going on there. And last, I used the Norman Animal Welfare Center today to get my cat fixed. So it's very simple, very easy. They chipped it, microchipped it, fixed him, and also updated rabies shots. So if you're lower income, you can go online. They have forms that you can apply. You can get it done free, reduce costs. They also have quite a few animals up there right now. So if you're looking for a great Christmas gift and you're able to take care of it, go up there and check it out. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, this Saturday and every other Saturday, shop Norman Local.
Well, good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. Just a couple of items to place in your calendar, and it is regarding an open house for the AIM Norman project that we have underway. So there will be two next month, so two open houses. One will be Tuesday, December 10, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Young Family Athletic Center located at 2202 Trey Young Drive. And then the second one is going to be Wednesday, December 11, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Development Center here on the city's campus, and that address is 225 North Webster. So the AIM Norman team will be there to provide an update to residents on the status of Norman's master planning efforts. This master planning was the plan that will be shaping our community for the next two decades. So other than that, those of you here with us and watching online, thanks for being here.
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four in the city of Norman. I wholeheartedly echo the reminder to go out to the open houses next month. Come way in on the maps that will be available. See what the future of your neighborhoods or commercial areas may look like, and the envisioned densities that we will see in the next 20 years. Last, I'll just say I noticed that people were asking for opportunities to give back this week, and I'd just like to highlight a mutual aid in downtown Norman. It's behind Yellow Dog Coffee at 222 South Porter. It is by no means the only pantry out there, so if you want to see if there's a pantry closer to you, I encourage you to visit the pantry page Norman. But anyways, this is the only outdoor fridge. There's a list of uses that are permitted, like no alcohol, no raw seafood or meat. What is permitted? Veggies, dairy, snacks you would enjoy, anything that's not prohibited. And you can find all that on Facebook or Instagram for Downtown Pantry. And also, speaking of local business, we have one in downtown that I would be remiss not to highlight that has helped a lot of our charities, nonprofits, and artists do fundraisers through t-shirt sales or pre-orders, and we've partnered with them for a new Ward Four shirt. And to my knowledge, Ward Four is the only ward with a t-shirt themed around all the things we have, like the train depot or bikeable lanes. We have some art on there, and I think the downtown fridge is actually on there as well. So anyways, check out Downtown Pantry. Thank you.
No announcements. Thank you.
Good evening. I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday and make sure that you have safe travels and a good time with family and friends, and make sure you get back to Norman safe. And also, to reiterate the importance of Small Business Saturday in Norman, I've been a part of the efforts to make that event something fun and something meaningful for a number of years, but I can tell you that not only does that activity help Norman, but it helps really build our community, and it supports our friends and neighbors and makes their businesses thrive, and that's something that really makes Norman unique, really as unique as the gifts that you can find shopping in Norman on Small Business Saturday. So just encourage everybody to be a part of that push. It's a whole lot of fun. You'll see a lot of people you know out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone here in person and who's watching at home as well. A couple of things that I wanted to note is the Norman Holiday Parade is next Saturday, the 7th, downtown, starting at 6:00 p.m., and followed by, at 7:00 p.m., the very first ever Winter Fest on Main Street. There will be food trucks and Wilson Elementary Choir, the mayor, probably several of us. Sooner Theater has a Christmas story going on. There'll be the tree lighting. There's going to be a drone show. The McFarland Bell Choir will be performing. Multiple food trucks, a frozen bounce house, I guess from the movie Frozen, Abbott House, Meals on Wheels, Firehouse Arts Center, Center for Children and Families, and a variety of other vendors, it says. And so this is the first annual, or you can't say first annual, can you? The first inaugural Winter Fest in downtown, and I think it's just, Santa will be there as well, and it'll be just another great opportunity, since Main Street will already be closed for the parade. The organizers thought it would be a good idea to just keep it closed for a few more hours and have a big festival downtown. So in addition to Norman Music Festival and Fall Fest, now we have Winter Fest where Main Street gets to be closed down, and people get to come out and bring families and have a really good time. So I would encourage everybody to attend that. And then also wanted to mention this past weekend and the, what I found to be a pretty amazing game weekend, not only the results of the game being extremely exciting for all of us longtime OU fans, but I heard a lot of really positive feedback from Alabama fans and their experience in Norman. They said everybody was extremely friendly, and they thought Norman, they really liked their time in Norman and the places they got to visit and some of our local businesses. And I posted about it on Facebook, and I don't, you know, I don't know if it's true or not, but this OU or Alabama student at the deli told me, he goes, "Norman is so awesome. You guys have the best bar scene in the whole SEC." So I'll just take that compliment, and we can all pretend that it is true even if it isn't. They had a great time, and I'm excited that we got to be a good host for them and that OU had such an amazing game and got everybody so excited. So I think that puts us on a good foot for the future in that regard. Also, wanted to recognize Officer Ben Gomez, who's been, he's been named the Regional Officer of the Year. Not only did he save a child who was choking on a nickel a while back, but he was also an integral part in resolving the nuisance house that came before council earlier this year, where for the first time ever, the council had to take action to abate a property that was causing problems in a neighborhood. And Officer Gomez and his partner, Chris Allison, worked on that situation for over a year and were able to bring forward a resolution. And so in my personal experience with Ben Gomez, he's always been extremely upstanding and really the model of how I think we would want all police officers to be when they're interacting with the public. And as the chief said in the video, when he shows up to a call, people know him and feel comfortable talking to him or sharing information with him and going to him for help, and I think that's real important. Also, would echo the thoughts about Small Business Saturday. I work for two locally-owned small businesses, Friendly Market and the Deli. Both, Friendly Market just had its 10-year anniversary as a business in Norman, and the Deli has been around since the 60s. So, but both of those businesses thrive off of local, you know, local customers and rely on repeat business from local people. And, you know, the big corporate, big-box stores, they don't really care as much about you personally coming into their store, and if you're not there, somebody else will be. But all these locally-owned small businesses, when you come in, they typically remember your name and your face, and they rely on you being a customer. So make sure you get out and support our locally-owned small businesses this weekend, and as Councilmember Peacock said, every weekend. And then lastly, just hope everyone has a wonderful holiday and would just encourage all of us to think about what we have and be thankful for it. Thank you.
Item number two, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place items three through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of item 15 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve items three through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of item 15.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve items three through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of item 15. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Votes have been cast, and the motion to approve items three through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of item 15 passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Nonconsent, item 21, an ordinance upon second and final reading, amending Chapter 36 Staff recommends that Item 3 through 20 be placed on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15. I'll entertain a motion to place Items 3 through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Motion on the floor is place Items 3 through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items 3 through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Items 3 through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve Items 3 through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Votes have been cast, and the motion to approve Items 3 through 20 on the consent docket with the exception of Item 15 passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Non-consent, Item 21. An ordinance upon second and final reading amending Chapter 36 to allow home occupations with stated restrictions to be carried in RE, Residential Estate Dwelling District, and RM4, Mobile Home Park District, and to redefine and make language throughout the zoning ordinance consistent.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion, I want to get started. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
A motion and second. I'd like to recognize Jane Hudson to make a presentation.
Good evening. Jane Hudson, Planning Director. I'm new here, I guess. I have a question. How do I advance the slides?
There's a little clicker.
Here comes the question.
It's like, oh, that's a point. I'm like, my gosh, there's a new secret. I don't know what it is. Okay, sorry. Make sure I know which way it goes. So yes, thank you. We're here to present the changes that we would like to recommend for home occupation in Chapter 36. In June of this year, we went to BACA to discuss this item, and then we had it at the October 10 Planning Commission meeting. So the first thing that we did is we went in and we created the definition for personal service salon or establishment. One of the things that we've talked about many times, it's been an issue for code compliance as well as council has received many calls from residents asking if someone could operate this personal business within their home. And one of the calls that we get most often is on the salon services. So we were directed to go forward and look at an opportunity to allow our residents, property owners, renters within the City of Norman to have these businesses within their One of the things that was also talked about was whether or not it could be sublet. So if you have a home and you have a salon, but you wanted to also rent it to a friend, that is not something that would be allowed with these amendments that we're presenting tonight. You are the resident of the unit, you would be allowed to do this, but you could not sublet this out to a friend. Another thing that we added within the Residential Estates Dwelling District and the RM4, the Mobile Home District, previously did not have the allowance for the home occupations. We added these two zoning districts to that, giving, you know, more individuals the opportunity to operate their home business. And of course, I will say, if there's homeowners associations that restrict this, then that overrules what we have in the code. And again, this goes back to what we had previously in the code. You can see main building is stricken, and we have added simply dwelling unit. And we also talked about this, we just did the ADUs. So if there was someone that was living in an ADU in the back, it wouldn't necessarily be considered the main unit, but this will allow someone that's living in a secondary unit, that they could operate the business there. And then the second qualifier is just, again, stating that with residential uses, not necessarily residential districts. Another topic that came up was the question about parking, the concern that we didn't want someone to operate this home occupation and then have a negative impact on the adjacent property owners. So specifically for this portion that we've amended, the beauty shop, barber shop, or other personal services, we've stated that no more than two personal vehicles of customers may be parked within a reasonable close proximity of the home occupation or on the home occupation premises at any one time. We were thinking that, you know, somebody shows up early, somebody's not quite done yet, at least we would still have that leeway to have two people there at the same time. And the second bullet here just shows where we've removed barber shop and beauty shop, but to be clear, we've kept these other restrictions in there. So carpentry work, dental offices, painting of vehicles, those are still considered to be more intense uses, and that's not something that we would want to be in the residential districts. So that's our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council?
Am I good? I was just curious, I saw that childcare was on the list of not acceptable uses and establishment, I should say.
On here? Yes. So childcare establishment in the zoning code is defined differently than a home daycare.
Okay.
Childcare establishment falls under the commercial, and that's different. So they would have more than seven, I think, is what the limit is for a home daycare.
And then, just curious, so if somebody is found to be subletting space to a stylist or has more than the two cars permitted, let's say there, it's a narrow street in core Norman, and there's cars on both sides, how is that addressed? Will they lose their permit? Will there be a fine?
We would work them through code, first of all, try to get compliance. But yes, I mean, if they are in a, if they're violating the zoning code, then we would have to file extremely, you know, file charges or something. But we don't control their licensing for their state license or anything like that, but we would, hopefully, we'd be able to work with them and achieve compliance.
Okay. And having seen some of these work their way through code, it is amazing. How many do come into compliance?
True.
So anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any persons that want to comment?
Yes, Mayor, Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6, and I'm kind of trying to get my thoughts because I just walked in, so I apologize for being all over the map. I had a question about this, basically, from what I remember when it came through Greenbelt, that this was going to be just its own community, and so my concern is, what about the language in here referring to homeowners mixing in with a community of, basically a trailer park? Or not a full-time trailer park, I understand that, it's just kind of people coming in and out. So I just really wanted clarification about what the distinction is going to be, and are they going to be their own entity? It's my understanding that they were supposed to have their own water, their own electricity and all that. So my question is, how does this interfere with basically the community that surrounds that?
Well, the question that we're considering has to do with home occupations. It doesn't have to do with travel.
Well, but the way it's phrased, the way it's phrased, it doesn't really specify that. So that was my, that was my question.
Thank you, ma'am.
To do things that are, you know, not disturbing to their neighborhood, it seems like there's definitely a call for these kinds of home businesses. So congratulations, I think, on meeting that reasonable demand. I did have a question, however, in terms of the sort of urgency about this. Do we have any information on how many people have been issued code violations for running a home occupation out of their home right now? Or the number of people who have been, you know, under, who have been, what would, I guess, you don't necessarily have a code violation, but have been notified that they need to rectify a code violation, like when they put up the yellow sign in your yard or however. Because it seems to me that one of the things that we've been doing in the city for a long time with regard to home occupation is just sort of turning a blind eye, and, you know, there's a certain sense in which that works, although people don't want to live under that, under that possibility of getting a code violation. But there are other issues that I think would be reasonable changes in our code violation that would help people, maybe a different set of people, that I think we should use this as a model for. So I'll probably bring that back up later. But I would love to have the information on who has been issued a code violation and how many people have been notified and have been working through the code violation process for home occupations. Thanks.
I guess my question is really about enforcement. My neighbors have more than two cars? They have four cars. How would you know if there are people visiting? You know, friend cuts my hair, we're hanging out while they're doing their thing. So I see enforcement issues, this just being another thing that's going to impose getting enforcement on the neighbors, like nuisance houses and things. So I don't really know what the solution for that is, because how do you know if people are just visiting and hanging out, or they were there for the business? I also wonder why somebody can't do carpentry in their garage in a non-intrusive way. People probably would drop stuff off, they would work on it, and then they would return it. They wouldn't necessarily be coming and going. I had a dear neighbor who used to do that sort of stuff. So maybe we could allow, if you refinish, I don't know if that counts as carpentry, to be there. I'm trying to read the rest of these sorts of things. Yeah, so my big question is just enforcement, and how would we, how would we take care of that? Thank you.
Chelsea Gravel.
Are there any final comments from council regarding? Adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. Motion, excuse me. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. You may cast your vote.
Votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 22. An ordinance upon second and final reading, amending Section 36 201 of the Code to remove all, of the Second State University Edition from the RM6 Medium Density Apartment District, and place the same in the SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development District at 310 East Boyd Street. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion and second. Mr. Gunnar Joyce, are you here to make a presentation?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, councilmembers. Gunnar Joyce on behalf of the applicant Trinitas Development. We also have Frank Rokio, representative of the developer here as well. I'll walk through the site real quick. It is on screen there, you can see just south of Boyd Street. We are just over two and a half acre site. Currently is the site of the Ray Apartment Complex that has about 64, 65 dwelling units. As we look at the adjacencies right here, you basically see on screen, everything that's shown in red is university-owned. So a lot of the adjacent neighbors are owned by OU. The ones that are not highlighted in red west of the alleyway are really the kind of mini-door student housing projects that are rented out as student housing right now. And then north of Boyd Street is actually the start of Center City Form-Based Code. So those vacant lots right on Boyd Street might look familiar to you. That was Bill Woods' project, the CCPUDs that were done probably about 10 months ago. North of that, that vacant piece of dirt is actually now Landmarks Project, which is the REV. So a lot of student housing in the area. And to the south, the bottom of the screen there is the Callaway House. So the proposal here is a purpose-built student housing project that is really an infill project, and it's exciting for a couple reasons. It is the first podium project proposed in Norman. So we'll talk a little bit about that, but before we get there, let's look at the zoning allowances. As you can see, on-site in brown is RM6, and so allowances for multifamily. We are going to a SPUD not to change the use, because again, we're going to be multifamily, but we're going to be able to change the allowable height on this site and the density that can be associated with it. So it's an infill development, more dense, right next to campus, and a really great location for it. There is the preliminary site plan. A couple of things to note, a maximum of 250 dwelling units are proposed on this site, and you could obviously see right there, most of the building covers up the site, so where is the parking going to go? And that is the first proposal in Norman, first private residential project that is a podium project. So the parking will be on the first two floors, and the dwelling units will be above it. This is an interesting site because it is already platted, so we didn't have to go through the plat process. You don't have any companion items in front of you tonight, it's just a zoning item, which means that this applicant did not have to go through the initial preliminary drainage analysis, did not have to go through a traffic study. Regardless of that, this development company, being a good community partner, did those things on their own. And one thing to note is that in the traffic study analysis, they determined that it is better for the project, better for the traffic diet on Boyd Street, to eliminate the existing access point, which is on Boyd. So how it's going to be accessed is off the existing alleyway that moves the traffic to this site farther west, which is better to get it away from the intersection with the railroad on Boyd. The existing alleyway is obviously a very narrow gravel alleyway at this point. Again, not being a plat, there are no public improvements that would be required of this developer. The developer, again, though, being a good community partner, is doing that on their own. They will improve this existing alleyway, going above and beyond the code requirements to ensure the traffic circulation and traffic capacity on that alleyway. A couple more things to note, as you can see on the right side of the screen and the right side, the east side of the site, is the stormwater management associated with the project. One of the first things we talked to Trinitas about was how open space, green infrastructure is very near and dear to Norman, and so they said, of course, sign us up. So there's bio-retention filtration area proposed on the southeast there, the green area, and also commitments to LIDs and BMPs, rain gardens, things of that nature throughout the site. So you can see, it's an improvement to the current apartment complex that does not have any of those BMPs or LIDs associated with it. And just to note, no change again to the allowable use. Here is the parking plan. So as we work our way on the screen from my left to my right, there is two rows of parking that are actually subgrade. The ground level and the second level are the main parking areas on the property. As you can see, and we'll show you at the end of this slide, there are units and amenity spaces and the main entrance and lobby spaces wrapping the building. So when you drive down Boyd, and when you drive down the alleyway, you won't just be staring at a parking garage, you'll be looking at units, you'll be looking at amenity spaces. It's an impressive architectural achievement to hide the parking garage. And then, as we go above the second story, and now we're into the residential floor plan, you can see this is what it would kind of look like as we go up stories, you know, three through the rest of them. And there's interior hallways, units on both sides, and in the middle there, those gray areas are outdoor, open space corridors and amenity spaces. The south one, that white box is a pool. There are fitness centers, and a very cool amenity that is exciting is, on the very top floor, there's plans to remove a unit on the west side and have basically an indoor-outdoor terrace balcony space that overlooks the stadium from this height that would be gorgeous views of the football stadium and the rest of the university. And we've had a And we've had a very walkable location, which is kind of an amenity of itself. And so just to show that here on screen, it's very close to the Sarkis Center, obviously the North Oval, the library, the football stadium. Campus Corner is extremely close as well, it's only about a five-minute walk. It's only about a 10-minute walk all the way to the northern part of the football stadium. So it's probably the most walkable, you know, two and a half acre site that was able to be developed here for a private student housing. It's an extremely good location. Trinitas is excited about it. Us going through the development process have only received very positive comments about the location and the walkability of the site. Here is a preliminary concept rendering that shows that bottom being kind of the glass front and not a parking garage. You can see some units as you go down the alleyway. Right now, we are basically looking east, so that road at the top of the image is Boyd Street, and you can see the intersection with the railroad. And then as you move and turn right here, you would take the improved alleyway. There's obviously thoughtful landscaping along all sides of this project, and you can see there's that cutout unit at the very top that would be that outdoor amenity space overlooking the stadium. A quick summary, again, is it's infill development. It is much-needed student housing, where we're replacing what currently is only serving about 60 units with 250 units, maximum of that. It's a commitment to LIDs and BMPs, voluntary traffic improvements that are above and beyond code requirement. We've received no protests throughout the entire process. Unanimous planning commission approval, and there was only two commissioners that made comments at planning commission during the discussion, so I wanted to call out some of those comments, mainly for Trinitas' efforts in this. But Commissioner Griffith led the discussion, just some of the things he said. "I can't tell you how excited I am to see this come about for students, the walkability to campus." He said, "It warms my heart to see this happen. You have my wholehearted support in this." Commissioner Jablonski followed that by saying, "I'd like to echo those sentiments. It's a great location for a project like this. With the university growing, there's substantial need for more housing. People can walk straight to campus. I think it's great, great that we'll see higher density, great location." I will note before closing and for question and answer, we've worked substantially with many of you. We greatly appreciate your time. Commissioner Grant has met with us as well, and I know there is a proposed floor amendment to cap the height at seven stories. It originally asked for a maximum of nine stories. Working with the development group and Commissioner Grant, we are favorable to that request. We able to support a lowering of the maximum height to seven stories. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Questions from council.
Councilmember Grant.
Councilmember Grant.
Yeah. And here's to make it more formal, I would like to make a motion to amend the site to seven stories instead of nine stories.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to make the ordinance, change the ordinance from nine stories to seven stories. Comments? Councilmembers?
Do you want to take public comment?
Before that, let's get the amendment going, and then we'll take public comment. Councilmembers, voting on the amendment to change the description from nine stories to seven stories, you may cast your vote.
Have been cast and the motion to amend the ordinance from nine stories to seven stories passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward five. While this project is impressive and adds much-needed housing, we need to recognize what Norman is losing as this project moves forward. The project requires the demolition of Ray Apartments. 64 units of affordable housing with rents ranging from 500 to 650 per month for studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The loss of Ray Apartments and the eviction of its current residents will further exacerbate Norman's already affordable housing crisis. I didn't hear any mention tonight from the applicant or the representative about the set aside of any of the units for affordable housing. Norman continues to lose ground. This is just one more example. What is the opening price point for an apartment at the new complex? Atmosphere, a similar complex built by Trinitas and located next to University of Arkansas, charges $1,529 per month for a small studio apartment, three times higher than the rate at Ray Apartments. Other Trinitas college-adjacent apartment complexes are similarly priced. State statute 11-14-101.1 prohibits you from regulating the amount of rent to be charged for privately-owned property. Council may not be able to regulate rent, but you do have the power to influence and positively impact Norman's affordable housing situation. It's likely too late for this project, but it's certainly not too late for future housing projects. Implement an inclusionary zoning policy. An inclusionary zoning policy requiring the developers of new housing projects to set aside a percentage of their housing units as affordable to low or moderate-income households. Go one step further and expand the inclusionary zoning policy to include an affordable housing requirement for the substantial renovation and conversion of existing apartment complex properties. Don't let developers dissuade you from implementing an inclusionary zoning policy by telling you that it will turn away future housing investments in Norman. Our community is thriving. Developers will continue to build. One last thought about this project. On their website, Trinitas lists focus on community as one of their corporate values. Perhaps they might voluntarily make a value-based commitment to set aside some of these units as affordable housing. It certainly does not hurt for you to ask. Thank you.
Stephen Ellis.
Stephen Ellis, Ward four. I have to apologize. I know there was an amendment on the floor, and I had to take that call. Are we amending or are we talking about the main? About the amendment, I'm in favor of a, I don't know that it matters a ton. Seven's pretty tall, nine is pretty tall. I wonder about the housing need. This is half, about half as much housing as is being proposed for the entertainment district. So it seems like it's either a drop in the bucket or it's going to take care of all the demand going forward, depending upon which version of the story you listen to. So I think in the interest of letting other developers have their say, seven sounds good to me. Thanks.
Ben Plummer.
Ben Plummer, Ward four. I'm in favor of this development, only I wish that it was closer to 30 stories tall and at least 20% affordable housing. So, yeah.
Cynthia Rogers.
Cynthia Rogers still, sorry, sorry, we had a personal thing going on there. Affordable housing, I, this is good infill, close to campus, yay. 250 dwelling units, so that's half of what's proposed for the entertainment district. No TIF required, private investment. I have some concerns about the stormwater. It seemed like there was just that one southeast corner that would be doing some drainage stuff, so I'm worried about compromising the creek there, which is also already compromised by other stuff. I'm also worried a little bit about the traffic. I heard, I know there's an alley, so I don't know how that becomes a road. I don't know what the process is and what part the community takes care of. And then finally, water pressure. I don't, maybe somebody can make sure we have enough water pressure, water to be provided there, because sometimes that's a problem on campus, particularly when the stadium is full. Thank you.
Am I understanding correctly that we're doing away with low-income housing, even though every single one of you have begged, pleaded, and cried for low-income housing, to replace this with expensive properties? That's pretty ridiculous and goes against everything you've been saying for the last two years. I'm really shocked. I don't quite understand why you are going against affordable housing in this situation. I'm against you guys doing this, but thank you.
I agree with everything Chelsea said.
No more public, but I have counsel.
Gunner, I have a few questions for you. Thank you. So the applicants, have they already purchased this property?
They have not. It's a contingency.
Their contract contingent on zoning.
Okay. Under the existing zoning, the RM6, what type of development could they do by right as it is?
It gets difficult height-wise, because it's basically three stories, and then the higher up you go, the increased setbacks off of both property lines increase. Being such a tight, narrow site, I don't think they'd be able to achieve, you know, very substantial height.
The, if they wanted to, they could redevelop this property without coming to us for approval, and they could build a larger apartment complex that's there now. Maybe not to the, what they're wanting to do with this project, but they could.
That's right, larger than what exists. That's correct.
Okay. The alley improvements, when we met last week, we had talked about half the alleyway roughly would be improved through this project. But I did bring up a concern that if people leaving this apartment are going to Boyd Street at that intersection, if they start having a really hard time turning left right there, I could foresee them going south down the alleyway to Page Street and then going west on Page to Trout or to Jenkins, and therefore putting a lot more traffic on that section of the alleyway that would not be improved. One of the suggestions was potentially improving the entire alleyway because of the impact this could have on it. But then also that piece of property between the alleyway and Trout Street, where there was a house, but has since been purchased by OU, the house is gone now, and the driveway curb cut has been filled in and the sidewalk has been extended across the front of it. So it appears to me that OU has no plans to do anything with it. And I, when I drove by the other day, I noticed people were just parking on it, so the grassy lot. So one of the other suggestions was looking into the ability, because it lines up perfectly with university place right next to Sarkis, the potential of an ability to connect that alleyway to Trout Street right there. In that way, avoid that alleyway becoming a main thoroughfare, so if you might speak about that.
Yeah, I think both of those are great suggestions and conversations to be had. We've started reaching out with OU and Trinitas has as well. The, can't make any commitments on either of those points because it's property off-site and outside of our ownership, but I think both of those very possibly could benefit the entire area, including this development. So I think those are conversations that will continue. It's probably a two to two and a half year overall construction project, so those will continue as, as design and construction advances.
Okay. And then that was another one of my questions, the timeline for the project, 2.5 years. What would be an estimated start time if it were approved tonight?
I think, Frank, I think you've quoted basically about two to two and a half years as, as an open date. Is that close?
Yeah, July 27.
Perfect.
July 27 is when you would start construction?
Be an open date.
25 to start.
2027. If this was approved tonight, when would you, when would the residents of the Ray Apartments have to move? And when would construction of this project start?
Frank said July 2025 would be a target date of moving dirt. We wouldn't control the leases with the existing tenants, it's the current owner, but in talks with what closing would look like, if it was approved tonight, they'd have substantial time, much more than, than 30-day notice or anything like that.
Is there any chance that it would be until the end of the school year, as in May?
Something that we wouldn't be able to control, because the current owner is able to do what those leases say, but we have no desire to speed up that process, and we can definitely make that request, that it's until after the school year is over.
Okay. I just asked because I know students live there now.
Yeah.
And, you know, if they had to move in March.
Yeah.
And they're graduating in May. That would be not a great situation. Okay. And then, so how tall is it in feet? We've had this discussion before about stories versus feet when we talk about height, and a building could be six stories tall, but be shorter than a building that's five stories tall, because the five-story building is, has taller floor heights.
I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know the city ordinances has a maximum height to be considered for a floor. We haven't sought a variance to that, so there is a cap on it. I don't know off the top of my head what that maximum cap is.
Okay. And, I mean, one of my, several of us expressed the concern when we first saw this project coming through pre-development and then planning commission. The immediate thought for me was definitely, well, the Ray Apartments are a old, and I don't know their status as far as code complacency, but they are 64 affordable, very cheap apartments that are in a great location. And I, I think we all understand market demands, and it's a high, highly valuable piece of property in a great location, so I could see why folks would want to purchase it and would want to redevelop it. I know several of us talked to you about how could we include a way to compensate for the loss of those. And my suggestion was, can we include 64 units in this development that are, I don't know if you'd be able to get them to be $500 to $650 a month, but that would be market rate affordable, as in no more than 30% of someone's income. And I know your concern was that this was geared towards students and not just the general public, but, you know, we did talk about the fact there are a lot of students that are low-income and are just kind of scraping their way through school and may work at a restaurant on campus corner or a bar. And so one of the things we talked about was the potential of allowing more height if there was some agreement that could be made about affordable housing. Would you talk about kind of where we ended up on that? I know you've talked with Councilmember Grant into that in more detail, but...
Yeah, the concern from the development team is that they won't be able to finance it. There's still heavy financing, there's both a joint venture backing and a traditional loan from a bank, and so the, when we get into the market, below market rate, the financing's difficult or impossible to achieve on a project like this at two and a half acres. They've been able to do it elsewhere across the nation, but more when they're dealing with sites that are 30-plus acres. There's more room to do that and still make the financing work. The goal and the hope of the development team is that by infill development here in this area, it would bring students that are renting up, single-family housing in the area, and would move that here, hopefully with the supply and demand argument that would lower those rents.
So potentially opening up existing housing.
Exactly right.
Okay. And I know we have seen some of that with some older student apartment complexes that were developed in the late 90s and early 2000s that have now opened up to more of a general public leasing. Commons is one of those.
Absolutely.
Was it downward or upward pressure? I can't remember.
Downward.
Downward pressure. Would this, I don't know if you've had any experience with a project doing this, but given the circumstances that you mentioned about the limited space and whatnot financing, if we were able to, would something like the city being able to help incentivize that inclusion make a difference in? make a difference in a development like this doing it?
I'm sure it would. Just depends on like that creates a financing gap. So how big that gap is, if the city wanted to come in and fill that gap, it probably moves the needle. But I know that Trenitas has never asked for that and has been 100% privately funded.
Okay. Well, that, like I said, is some of the questions I, that is all the questions I had. And again, I know that the affordable housing part is something really honed in on. It is a concern. It was the same concern I had with the OU motel.
Subjects, yeah.
Issue. And in that case, we were also in a situation where zoned commercial could be redeveloped commercially by right. We approved their rezoning and for a six story apartment building, and that seems to have fallen through and isn't happening. I guess there might be another project coming for that property. But, but that continues to be a concern though. You know, the Ray Apartments and the OU Motel may not be particularly attractive properties to look at. They may not contribute a lot to property value or things like that. But, but I agree with the statements of, or made by comments from the public that, you know, every time we lose one of these, we're not, nothing new is affordable. That's for sure, that replaces it. And, you know, as I've stated many times and several up here is that, you know, one of the best, most effective ways at addressing issues of homelessness is expanding affordable housing, doing anything we can to incentivize it or make it easier to develop on your own. And trying to make sure people don't end up homeless in the first place. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
I'm so encouraged to hear that people care about affordable housing. Who would have thought? But also we had an affordable housing town hall that talked about market compression. So while I do have concerns about 65 units that are pretty affordable right now, we do see when people have the ability to move out of where they're at, that they choose that and that frees up housing for other folks. I also know that in this development, there are one to five units or also there's studio inefficiency planned in this as well, right?
That's correct. Right. Range from that all the way up to five.
So there'll be a range of pricing in this development. I know it's too early to know how much each of those will cost. I will say this for developers listening, if you want to get in on affordable housing and have a lot of favorable comments, get with us at the very beginning of your projects. Because I'll say this for affordable housing, depending on how you're doing it, you will probably have to do a lot of legwork in advance to make it pencil. That said, I wanted to focus on the stormwater question and what exact, you said it was improved when we spoke above and beyond what is required.
That, that's correct. Yeah. Again, not being a plat item, none of the stormwater or drainage analysis was required. Right now, the site is essentially all impervious coverage. And so this is a proposal that will improve the current site and not only accounts for runoff onsite, but goes above and beyond code requirement to have some of those low impact developments like what's called out there, the bioretention area and rain gardens.
And then with the parking situation, I love that it's all onsite, but also there is an option for commuter students to utilize their commuter status and park in a lot.
There certainly is. There are commuter lots around the Sarkis Center over there to the west of the site. If you live off campus, which this site is off campus, then you can have a commuter pass and can park there overnight, except on game days. Just a little bit on parking, the developer here actually really commended Norman. They've gone to many other towns and named Oxford and they have a one next to Auburn as well. Both of those towns basically require the, you know, sea of parking, the outdated method. It is never full. It is way too much and the developer doesn't like it. They actually came in with less than the code recommendation of 1.2 on this project because that's their actual experience is that when you have a site this walkable and this close to campus, they have plenty of tenants that come in and either carpool or don't even have a car at all. They have two different rooms that are likable, lockable bike storage areas in the project. And so they actually increased up to the 1.2 code recommendation based on some feedback that, that we heard. But there's plenty of parking, both for their experience, but even if not and spillover is needed, the commuter passes an option.
And then I was gonna say their other projects are known for having students that choose to walk or an alternate form of transportation.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. So we covered the market compression aspect. Oh, also I was gonna say, you know, just in general for people listening, that had they chose to build this in center city, there would have been funds that could incentivize affordable housing. But this property lies just outside of it. Maybe in the future, whoever is listening buys land in center city and recognizes in that plan, we do outline affordable housing and looking favorably upon projects to get TIF dollars for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further comments from council? All right. Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading as amended. Council members.
Final reading.
I'm, I'm on final reading. You're right. No, I'm on second. You want me?
Our second was as amended.
Okay, got it.
Here we are.
Okay. Got to make more pencil marks.
That's okay.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance as amended on final reading.
Second.
Motion is second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance as amended on final reading as a whole passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. At the request of staff and with council's concurrence, I would like to consider item 24 before item 23. Are we, we all in agreement?
I agree.
Okay. Item 24, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and or postponement of contract K 242558, a service and lease agreement with City Care Incorporated for the operation of an emergency overnight shelter and fund appropriations as outlined in the staff report. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to recognize Anthony Pieron to make a presentation.
Am I in the wrong direction, aren't I? There we go. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and give a overview of both items left on the agenda. The contract in front of you, which was item 24, which is being considered first, and then as well as the resolution 2425-53. I think that these two items need to be considered in context. Thank you. Together. And so that's why I'm giving the presentation and combining them. An overview of the items, the first one is the contract. This, like the item title said, was a service and lease agreement with City Care, which is an operator of an Oklahoma City shelter that we identified as an alternative to the current operator based on city council feedback. And then we have, I think, the second item, which would be a resolution terminating the current contract with the current operator Food and Shelter. With that in mind, I'll give a little bit of a timeline. This, you know, was first brought to city council in October of 2022. This was the contract with Food and Shelter to operate an overnight warming shelter for the winter 2022, 2023 season. Council on multiple occasions extended that contract. And in June 2023, they extended that contract on a month to month basis. In May of this year, there was a draft audit report released with findings and recommendations relating to that contract, which prompted, you know, council to request staff to renegotiate that contract with Food and Shelter. That renegotiation was not successful. And in September of 2024, Food and Shelter gave the city a notice stating that they would no longer be operating the shelter past March 31 of 2025 or until a new operator was found. With that information, city council directed staff to begin searching for a new operator. And this contract and the resulting two items are a result of that search. And as we brought to council last week, we did manage to negotiate a contract with City Care. They're an Oklahoma City provider. They've been operating since 2021, a low barrier shelter similar to the one that we're operating here. And then before that, they were operating a day center that offered, you know, services to the unhoused as well as for multiple years, they have been operating successfully, over 100 units of permanent supportive housing. So I say that their operation was very similar to the one we have here. That's because ours was modeled after the City Care model. So the fact that we are able to contract with City Care directly in order to provide the service, we think is very exciting. And we think that, you know, we have really contracted with a really great provider and we're really happy with what we're able to bring you. And especially their really strong experiencing in housing the people that they serve and giving them really great resources. And I think this contract really effectuates their ability to do so moving forward in the city. So what does the actual contract provide for? This is a reimbursement contract, meaning that on a monthly basis, they will be able to submit reimbursement requests to the city for that operation up to what they have set forth in the budget, which is attached to the contract. It would also have to be provided with supporting documentation and city staff will review prior to giving out any reimbursement to the contractor. The contract period is split up into, there's probably three different discrete periods. The first would be the contract mobilization for them to get started and prepare for full operation. There would be a two week transition period that would begin January 1st for two weeks, eventually which will lead to their full operation of the shelter on Gray Street, starting on January 15th until the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. You know, essentially, again, luckily, we were able to contract with the entity where we modeled ours after. We think that a lot of the day to day will be pretty much the same. There will be security provided in the same manner that they operate now in Oklahoma City. The initial check in period, they will be used at walkthrough metal detector and then security will be present during that time. They will also, this is a new addition, will employ housing navigators, I think a full time and a part time position. And they will be dedicated to case management for the people staying at the shelter. And I think this is a huge, huge step forward in the service being provided. And that's one that City Care really identified as key in order to providing the service. Because if you're not, you know, actually connecting people with housing and making those, you know, taking those steps, I think that in not having resources specifically dedicated to that end, you know, you can find yourself spinning your wheels. And so that was something that they identified as necessary for them to take the contract. And again, the location will remain the same at 109 West Gray. However, we would hopefully anticipate soon moving that agreement and the location to a new, more permanent location, which I'll get into here in a minute. Let's go into the funding for this contract. The actual total monthly cost, if you will, will likely be higher. As this is a reimbursement contract, the actual monthly amount can't necessarily be determined, although there is a cap amount because that is what the budget would require. On the screen, you know, like the total for the funding we are requesting tonight is 639,000, around that amount. Some of that will be to pay out the existing contract with Food and Shelter. About just under 500,000 would be for contract payments to City Care so that they can fulfill the remainder of the fiscal year. And then we're also requesting about $25,000 in needed site improvements for safety equipment and as well to free up an existing bathroom that's already there so that the people staying at the shelter can have a better access to bathroom. Because right now there's only one on each side for the men and women's dorm. And as we've known for some time, that is not sufficient when you have that many people. So, and as well, you know, some of those other improvements would be like defibrillators, right? And then also the dedicated office space for that case management that this contract would add. And we tried to keep the majority of the improvements that will be installed as transferable to a new permanent location. Again, you know, the costs attributable to this contract are set by a budget that was negotiated. And the monthly cost is increased from the previous contract with Food and Shelter. The previous contract was around $54,000. This one's up to 62. But again, we are adding those two new positions for housing, housing navigators. All right. And then as well, the intent to move to a new location has not changed. Staff is diligently working with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services to carve off a piece of property that they own in that area in order to house the permanent shelter location. So we talk with them weekly. In fact, we had a conversation with them today. And, you know, the most recent update is OMS, the Oklahoma Office of Management and Enterprise Services, who handles property disposition. They're surveying the property as we speak in order to get us a legal description so we know what parcel that we would hopefully be getting. And in council, you also gave the green light in November, earlier this month during BACA, to move forward with a TIF district for the property, hopefully, and, you know, to help the development of the entire parcel. And OMS will be the applicant for that TIF. So we're excited to move forward with that as well. So in addition to that small parcel, we're moving on the whole parcel as well and working with the state to bring you guys something we think will be exciting for the community. All right. And then also in context, there's also the separate item, which is a resolution terminating the current contract with Food and Shelter. This is the second item that will be voted on. The current contract with Food and Shelter can be terminated with 30 days notice. We're recommending obviously a little bit more time and so that there would be a continuous operation of the shelter. The notice would require, would terminate the contract the same day that City Care would take over. So it would be January 15th would be Food and Shelter's last day and the first day for City Care to maintain full operation. If, you know, the City Care contract is approved, that, you know, is, I think is why we're pushing the second, the resolution item second, so you can make a determination as to the termination. And then of course, we have been in contact with the current operator, Food and Shelter, and they have been in contact with City Care and they are dedicated to ensure a smooth transition between the two contractors. And with that, I'm open for any questions from council.
You spoke about the TIF a little bit. And I know the schools and businesses and neighbors around Griffin are really excited to have this moved into their backyard. So let me ask you a question. If our current model is based off of City Care, where, where was the failure that led us to be here tonight to look at canceling this contract and starting a contract with City Care? Because obviously something didn't work there. Can you tell me where that failure was?
Could you, I guess the, the reason for having to enter into an agreement with a separate? Well, I think that would probably stem from Food and Shelter's notice earlier this year, stating that they would no longer be willing to operate the contract or operate the shelter past the dates that they gave or the conditions they gave.
Okay. But that's changed a few times. I mean, at first they wanted to end it immediately, then they decided they want to stay on and they wanted to end it again. So, I mean, if, if our current contractor got their training from City Care and we're getting rid of the current contractor due to numerous findings in our audits. By the way, if you stayed at the shelter recently, your social security number may have been leaked. So I, I would definitely check on that. We just got an email today that the contractors leaked a bunch of social security numbers. So I would definitely check on that. But there's just been so many failures with the current provider that moving on to a new provider that provided, the, the people that provided that training, it just doesn't seem like a good idea to me.
Quick point of.
And I'm not going to blame, you know, say a teacher's a bad teacher because of one bad student. But looking at what's going on, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
And, and just to clarify, my understanding of when I mentioned earlier that this is the model that was adopted, I don't. the model that was adopted, I don't necessarily think that that was a direct relationship between those two parties. It was more of, I think, you know, City Care was someone who, I think, has been identified as a model practice, and I think that there was probably some level of collab, I know there was some level of collaboration. I don't necessarily think it was a type of interaction where City Care was, you know, actually giving instruction. It was more of like when you give someone a call and say, hey, what do you guys do for this? And so I don't think they necessarily had that much of a hand in the direct operation of our current shelter, so much as it just informed how Food and Shelter and the city of Norman, as well as when we operated our shelter with staff, it's more of just informed the decisions made by the city and Food and Shelter.
And councilmember, if I can add, the primary element in the amended agreement that council presented, that was very much modeled after how security is handled, that does follow the model of City Care, and that was not implemented by the current operator. So that's the, that's one of the big differences between the contract you're moving into versus the contract we'll be terminating.
Right. And we have three councilors here that were on council when we decided to open the shelter. And so in that time, you said so yourself, Anthony, that we've gone, that every other contractor that we reached out to said that Norman goes above and beyond to make sure we give our shelter what it needs to operate, correct?
I would say that we definitely give more than some of the other communities within Oklahoma.
Right. Most other communities is what I was saying.
Yeah, and so...
And even though we gave, we give more resources and do more to ensure the safety of the people at that shelter, and to ensure that that shelter is run correctly, it's not happening. And I say that based on our audit, based on what we see when we drive down the road. So, that's where I'm at. I'll let some other people talk, and I may come back.
Yeah, point of clarification, I'm glad you touched on it, Anthony. City Care did not train Food and Shelter, as I understand it, and if any Food and Shelter employees want to work for City Care, I'm under the impression they have to be actually trained by City Care to work for them.
Yeah, I think there will be like an interview process, is what we've been told, and they'd have to go through the same application process, but, you know, obviously with staffing and everything, that they're highly encouraged to apply.
Oh, yeah. No, that was part of the making it all work.
Yeah.
And then the other part about City Care that I am very comfortable with and supporting is the security that was outlined, and I like that a lot of this is transferable to a permanent location, however we get there. I'm very supportive, and it sounded like in our Tuesday study session that the majority of us liked the direction this was going, so, thank you.
Buttons aren't working. Okay, so increased security compared to what is currently, as far as walk-through metal detectors, security on-site in the beginning, or when they're bringing people in. The housing navigators, how, what will they be doing differently than the current situation? Because I know current operator has been able to get people housed. Nobody that's currently staying at the shelter was staying there when it opened, and the time that people stay there is, on average, not really that long. There's a few that have stayed there longer, for sure. But they've been able to get people out of that shelter and into housing. What will this, these dedicated navigators, what will they be doing that's more, I guess?
And let me clarify, I can't necessarily speak, you know, I will not claim to be an expert on, you know, the roles of each, you know, contractor. I think that the way that the, you know, I specifically am looking at it is, we had had discussions with Food and Shelter, part of that was during the renegotiation process, and, you know, I think what was conveyed was potentially that they would have liked to offer more dedicated case management. Part of, you know, the discussion and the negotiation was increasing, you know, for example, the shelter manager could have had more hours in order to, you know, offer that housing case management. I don't think, again, the current contract calls for a dedicated staff person. So, you know, the person's responsibility is, you know, essentially and primarily finding housing for the people staying at the shelter and connecting them with resources in order to, you know, overcome any barriers they have to being permanently housed, right? Whereas if you're operating with a, you know, a smaller, you know, number of staff, or if you're, you know, having to rely on intake staff, which I think is part of what the city did when it ran the shelter, you run into issues with, is there enough time, when you have 53 people, to sit with them individually on a one-on-one basis while you're trying to do three other things and, you know, go from there? And, and I think that, you know, the great thing that City Care has is they have, you know, this already established in their model in Oklahoma City, and that is just going to be replicated here in the city of Norman. So I think part of it is a matter of resources being dedicated to that specific purpose, as well as, you know, a model specifically geared towards providing overnight shelter and case management at the same time, and what that looks like on the ground.
And does City Care have, as part of their organization, the ability to fundraise for operations of their services, you know, in Oklahoma City and in Norman?
Yes, they do. And then, you know, that is another part of, I mean, any nonprofit is going to have that baked into what they do in order to get the funding that they have, and City Care is no exception to that, and they do have staff members who do reach out and to leverage those community resources for the people they serve.
Okay. And then if this contract is approved, does it have the same 30-day notice clause in it that we could terminate early?
Yes, that's my understanding, it does.
So no later currently than June 30th, but the council could terminate at any time with 30-day notice?
Correct. And I think there's also, and again, this is going to be in the contract as well, it's also 10-day notice if there's a violation of the contract or if there's another cause for that contract. So 30 days minimum, but you could also go down to 10 days in circum, certain circumstances.
Okay. Have any other entities, nonprofits, churches, private sector, come forward to the city, contacted you to offer to take over this operation for the city?
No organization has come forward. I will say, we have had some individuals who are very interested and, you know, who are actually qualified and wanted to, you know, support in any way they can, because I think Norman has a great, you know, variety of service providers, but no organization itself, no.
No churches in Norman have come forward to offer providing overnight shelter?
No.
No nonprofits, no private businesses, no, nobody has contacted the city of Norman. We've had councilmembers say that there's people out there willing, that are waiting for us to give the green light. Has anybody come forward and offered to take this off the city's hands?
No, but I will, you know, I will say, and I think Salvation Army, while they have not come forward and said we will offer the service on behalf of the city, they are expanding their current overnight shelter services. So we do have, you know, agencies within Norman who are expanding their offerings, but none that are willing to do it in this capacity under a contract like this, no.
Okay. And this may be a question for Daryl. The general fund, we have a fund surplus currently.
Would you have fund balance available?
And can the general fund afford this?
It always boils down to a matter of priorities, and this is not too large a pill that would preclude council from being able to provide that service.
Okay.
And, sorry, if I could add, the one thing I neglected to mention during my presentation, of the 639,000, 119,000 of that would be ARPA funding that was left over from an affordable housing project that the city is working on finalizing, and this is, was identified as a potential different funding source that would need to be obligated by the end of the year.
So I was going to ask, that ARPA funding has to be spent on something like this, or has to be allocated or put towards something by the end of, I don't know, is it the same as what we were talking about the previous meeting, by the end of December?
Yeah, it'll be under contract if council approves the agreement tonight.
Okay. Okay, that's the questions I have for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Ball?
Councilmember Ball? You said the 10 days for contract cancellation. What would fall into that category? What kind of violations?
If I remember correctly, that's going to be, I mean, pretty standard language of like violations of the contract terms, submission of fraudulent documents, things of that nature.
Okay. And just for the record, St. Joseph's has an area that they've requested a permit for, for housing. It would be for female housing, they would have 15 to 20 rooms available. The reason that permit has been denied, from what my understanding, is because there's not a sprinkler system installed. So as a city, we can, you know, push past that and put a shelter down here with no sprinkler system, but we're not going to issue a permit to a church. So i- if that's true, I mean, I've just found out about that today, so we could look into that. But there are other organizations and churches that are willing, like you said, Salvation Army is willing to step up, and there's quite a few more. If we would make the barrier, if we could make it less of a barrier for people to actually have services like at our churches and charities, I think we'd have better luck there. Yeah, I know Major Vincent's not here tonight, I saw Chief Foster earlier, but I wanted to bring a comparison, and I know Major Vincent had all this data, so I really wish he was here. I think some of the people in the audience may have it and may speak on it, though. And Councilman Holman brought this up. Well, we had a nuisance house here in Norman, and we shut that down due to drugs, complaints from the neighbors, issues like that. Well, one of the individuals that was evicted from the house came to Food and Shelter with body armor and a shotgun and tried to rob it. Now, why are you going to Food and Shelter to rob it? There's only one thing, and that's drugs. And like I said, Major Vincent has all these numbers, and we're going to hear some of them from the audience tonight, but we've had more calls for Food and Shelter, for calls of service, crime, neighbors' complaints, than we ever did with that nuisance house. And yet, we just keep throwing more money into it and thinking it's going to get better. And we talked about natural disasters earlier. Mr. Powell, if we were to, if something happened to the shelter right now, what would we do with those 53 people? I mean, if there was a fire in there, or a truck ran through the front door, no back asleep in there, would we be able to take care of those 53 people immediately?
We would have a couple of avenues that we would need to pursue, some of which would be the pursuit of hotel vouchers for some short-term solution, and the opportunity for Food and Shelter to take on more in their dining room area that they've done under emergency weather scenarios, when it was minus 15 degrees outside, they were able to open up the dining room and bring in a few more people off the street. So those are the two avenues we would pursue immediately.
But we could make that happen. I mean, because we are always prepared for an emergency here. I mean, if we weren't, we'd need somebody else in charge.
We like to think we are.
So, and right now, if we do not renew this contract today, we have 30 days. If we say, if we do not, if we cancel the contract this evening, they're in business for 30 more days, right?
No, the resolution calls for a termination to be effective January 15.
January, okay, so we have 45 days. And so Mr. Powell just said we could find a place for everybody almost immediately if it was an emergency, and we have 45 days, and we can't find anything to do with these people? We can't find something more compassionate than putting them in this shelter and then kicking them out in the morning? Yeah, I'm going to be a no.
Councilmember Dixon?
At the study session, I'd ask about the, kind of the Oklahoma City's $8,500 a bed cost and our $13,900 a bed cost, and the answer was basically economy of scale. What's the, what's the kind of ideal number for number of beds in a shelter?
That's a great question. I am, you know, not, I would not say I'm an expert in that regard. I'm sure that, you know, someone like City Care would probably have a better number, having operated it as they did. I wish I could remember off the top of my head how many they, current beds they have. I think that, you know, what I can share is, based on their feedback that they have given us, is that they went off of their point-in-time count, and they used the point-in-time count around the same time to determine like the beds, and I don't think they necessarily accounted for increased numbers, which they have seen in recent years. So I think that with that in mind, well, you know, I wish I could give you a better answer, yeah.
Fair.
Councilmember Grant?
Councilmember Grant?
Is it on? Okay. I actually do have an email from Chad Vincent, and it has to do with the data that has been floating around. Norman, I think we've been having a discussion about an accurate fact sheet, but briefly, this is what he says. "The truth is that we have one of the most transparent police departments in the country when it comes to publishing police data. We are finding that a variety of people and organizations are taking the raw data that we publish on our website and then completing their own analysis. In these circumstances, it is nearly impossible to validate or confirm those findings because we simply have no idea how they got to their conclusions. If folks are willing to share, we will always take a look to see what their process was. I've attached our data that we have produced internally. This data has been compiled and analyzed by our staff and can be replicated. The data for this year is through the end of September. Just a quick highlights for year-to-date 2024, the police department has responded to 71,196 calls for service. 4,899 of those were related to homeless individuals, that is 6.88%. The police department has arrested 511 homeless individuals and charged them with a total of 1,792 criminal charges. These aren't convictions, only charges. The police department has responded to the emergency shelter 117 times. That number was projected to be 160 by the end of the year, which is about 10 more times than in 2023. The police department continues to look for ways to team up with their community partners to find ways to address these challenges." And they say they have a couple concepts in development. But roughly, that's kind of where that data is. And my next question is to city manager Pyle on an info sheet that adequately informs our public of replicable data and findings.
City staff is compiling data from a couple of different sources. One, related to municipal code violations and the volume of activity that basically addresses infractions and misdemeanors through Norman Municipal Court versus felony calls for service, felony arrests, and felony prosecutions. There's, there's, there's a perception that, you know, the police department does not respond to calls involving our, members of our homeless population, and we have substantial court activity and police department activity arrests, citations, and prosecutions through municipal court to demonstrate the PD is very busy in dealing with those misdemeanor issues. But yeah, in total, the number that Major Vincent referred to, about 6% to 7% of all the calls for service being related to the homeless population, it's trying to make sure we can answer all the questions we're hearing from one big data set.
So nowhere near the 40% that's been floating around.
You might say 40% of municipal code activity, which are misdemeanors and infractions, trespassing, littering, loitering, that type of activity.
And we do do warrant clearings to help people, you know, as we do with code, come into compliance in the case of this, get theirselves together if they can.
Mrs. Rhonda Guerrero or clerk manages that docket along with our prosecutor, Mr. Anthony Parentin, and our judges are cognizant of, you know, an individual's ability to pay a fine, an individual's ability to make bail, and what we're looking for is corrections in behavior. And I think our judges are making progress, and they're trying different attempts to get that corrected behavior they so desire.
And then to Councilmember Dixon's question about the ideal number of beds, I'll just... And then to Councilmember Dixon's question about the ideal number of beds, I'll just remind everybody, last Tuesday, it was brought up that we're paying for Fire Watch, and if we weren't in a building that didn't have sprinkler, or did have sprinklers, we wouldn't be paying that cost, so that cost would come down. That's all I have.
Anything further from council? Do you have anybody in the public that signed up
So I just have one question before I start. So am I speaking, I'm speaking on both? So am I speaking on which one first?
You're speaking on the lease agreement with City Care and the operation of a city emergency overnight shelter.
Okay. Okay, I'll speak on, so I'm speaking on, ordinance O. 1920-62 led to a special election on August 25, 2020, where Norman voters were asked to decide on four propositions. Proposition 2 is particularly relevant to this discussion. Here is an excerpt from Proposition 2 in that ordinance. Quote, "Shall the City of Norman, State of Oklahoma, incur an indebtedness by issuing its general obligation bonds in the sum of $5 million to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, expanding, repairing, which may also include improving, renovating, acquiring, and equipping homeless shelter community facilities, all to be owned exclusively by said city," unquote. Norman voters rejected Proposition 2 in the 2020 special election. While some wards may have supported the proposition, the overall election result remains unchanged. The opinions of the public, whether shared in private or public forums, do not alter the election outcome. The margin of the vote doesn't change the fact that Norman voters rejected the proposed proposition during that election. Norman voters said no to a permanent city-owned homeless shelter. I ask you to consider this. At what point does council's continued efforts to expand, renovate, repair, equip, and fund what was initially intended as a temporary winter warming shelter transform it into the permanent city-owned homeless shelter that voters rejected in 2020? Using federal subsidies and general funds instead of the general obligation bonds proposed in Proposition 2 does not change the voters' decision. The central issue is that voters rejected the concept of a permanent city-owned homeless shelter. By moving forward, council is disregarding the will of the voters, undermining the democratic process, and betraying the public trust. Respect the August 2020 decision. If council believes that voter sentiment has changed, it should put the issue to a vote during the February 2025 election and respect the outcome. Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Hutzle, Ward 5. One quick thing. I retired from TSA 15 years at the airport supervisor. Walk through metal detectors, not going to find all the weapons. And those people that go through it, most of them will have to take off their shoes because there's metal shanks in almost all shoes. Think about that. Okay, your own staff, after they did research, responded to one of your questions a couple months ago, that other cities don't own or manage city shelters. The nonprofits do, supported by some of the city donations. Anytime the government, whether it be local, state, federal, gets involved in trying to fix a problem, it costs more and is less efficient. Just look at what happened in North Carolina and Florida after the hurricanes. It was the nonprofits that did the best job. Why? It's what they do for a living. The Salvation Army is expanding their overnight shelter by 50 beds. That is almost as much as the current city shelter accommodates. I think the city should close the shelter, donate the beds to Salvation Army Shelter. This is a group who has done this for decades around the country. Another concern the council had was coming to winter, having a warming shelter. Food and Shelter's main facility has a large dining area that's large enough to hold 200 people as a warming shelter. Norman was paying $54,832 a month for the shelter plus utilities, I assume. Now you're wanting to increase that to $62,683 a month. That is not all the cost associated with the homeless population in Norman. Crime is a big issue. The 2024 point-in-time study showed Norman had 240 homeless, including adults and children. Yet the Norman Police Daily Arrest summaries show there's been 675 homeless individuals arrested multiple times this year alone through the end of October. 791 of their 1,130 arrests resulted in booking at the Cleveland County Detention Center. Each of these arrests cost the city $50 for booking and $60 a day at the Cleveland County Detention Center. That is at least $87,010 for those 675 individuals this year. Records have shown, many have to stay more than one day. Numbers don't lie. Norman spent since January 1, 2024, at least $635,330 on the shelter and the homeless criminals. In the past, council members have stated that the criminal element of the homeless is low. Let's say only 10% of those numbers are criminals. That would make the homeless number 6,750 individuals. Even at 50%, the number would be 1350. You already know other cities are bringing their homeless to Norman. Norman can't afford to try and house all these individuals. Norman needs to get out of the shelter business. Nonprofits can apply for grants from government agencies.
Good evening. My name is Dr. John Scammyhorn, a retired chemical engineer. I've lived in Ward 1 for 43 years. It's been pointed out that the mess with Norman's homeless shelters started when we funded the first warming shelter on Comanche Street. It was a naturally compassionate response to a cold snap which threatened to cause there to be frozen bodies in the street. We have learned the hard way that the city has no business running shelters, no matter how good our intentions. The City of Norman needs to shut down all shelters by the end of March. We can no longer kick the can down the road. One way to get us to that date is to contract with City Care to run the current shelter through March 31. However, I understand that City Care will not consider any contract of less than six months. If true, then the shelter should be closed down as soon as possible. To perpetuate a city-run shelter is the epitome of throwing good money after bad. It has been quite an adventure over the past few years as a city has searched for a suitable location for a permanent shelter. I've talked in front of this board a number of times on that. Again and again, we hear from that no one wants a shelter in their neighborhood. Lucky for Norman, Oklahoma City has the ability to accommodate substantial numbers of unhoused individuals. OKC has shipped many homeless to Norman for years. It is time for reciprocity. The cost of transporting individuals and their property out of Norman will be small compared to ongoing costs of shelter operation. Transitioning out of the shelter business will be painful, as we're paying for mistakes made by past city governments. But the end of the road is a more efficient way to deal with homelessness. Future generations will thank us for making Norman safe again. Make Norman safe again. Thank you.
Trey Kirby?
Trey Kirby, Ward 5. I just had a few questions. When you closed it, and you said, you know, the people will get transferred to OKC or whatever, but the City Care is going to take care of it. I work in the city every day. I drive on Virginia, on multiple other streets. City Care don't do that great a job. When they closed one of the facilities up there near one of my buildings, we took $3.5 million worth of damage within 10 days. Nobody took care of that. We had to take care of that, or insurance had to take care of that. Abandoning a plan that was set into place against the will of the people is still abandonment. We need to look at what we can do. Like, what was it, five months ago? The Supreme Court ruled that we could ban all encampments? Have we tried that at all? Have we passed any ordinance to ban the encampments instead of just, you know, immediately going after the shelters, since it is an option and the Supreme Court ruled it? So, like I said, they're going to go somewhere because they are people. We didn't want it, but we got it. Now we have to do something about it. That's, I mean, it's, I don't, if we hire City Care, the problem just goes farther down the road. If we abandon the problem, then all the businesses are going to suffer because people have to go somewhere. People won't just get on a bus against their will, or that'd be like kidnapping. So unless they agree to leave, then they can't leave. Like, I mean, we can't just demand them gone. So I'm guessing, say, what are we going to do about it to ensure local families and businesses and everybody don't suffer from an immediate closure without any single plan? Because I keep hearing about closing it, but I don't see a plan to move forward. And that's, I just want to know, do y'all have a plan? Because McFarland started it, correct? Has anybody called McFarland and asked them if they would take it back over? Is that, was that who started it? That's a true question. I don't know who started it. I'm just asking, like, who started friends originally? But I just know we need to do something about it besides just throw everybody out on the street, because that's going to come back on as residents.
Ma'am, please do not interject into this. You'll be asked to leave.
Stephen Lett?
Oh, no, my time's going already. Thanks for swapping the order of these things. Oh, thanks for resetting it. So, yeah, I didn't really prepare anything because, yeah, I am for this. Pass, pass this. Great. We need a shelter. I guess, you know, I'm opposed to what the other folks here were saying, pretty inhumane stuff. So, the whole idea, I, what, busing people around? Like, that's what we're afraid of, coming here, or it's already happening, or I don't know, there's all kinds of wild conspiracies out there. But the fact is, most folks are from here. We're just trying to take care of our neighbors and friends. There's also these people talking about safety, which I feel incredibly safe walking downtown. I love that the shelter is downtown. Controversial opinion. I live in Ward 4. Sorry, Steve Lett, Ward 4. So I enjoy getting to walk over to Andrews Park and then down to Main Street through Gray. I say hey to all my friends. It's lovely. If you, if you treat people like they're, you know, humans, like, they're pretty nice to you, you know? If you actually, like, care. And so, us performing and investing in sort of a resource that is for everyone. Like, many of us are very close to being homeless, right? We just saw y'all vote unanimously to redistrict something that is going to make us lose affordable housing, right? We're losing affordable housing. We need, we need this safety net for folks. So there's more money. I always think we should be investing more in our unhoused community, in the resources. I have been struggling to run and maintain a nonprofit. Y'all talk about, like, nonprofits and, like, churches, like, we're amazing? Like, we suck. Like, we're very bad at what we do. We have, like, hardly any resources. We struggle to survive. Y'all actually, like, we try to reinvent taxation. That is our job. We're trying to get money from rich people. That's what y'all do, okay? That's what the state does, okay? We, we're trying to reinvent that and struggling to provide resources, okay? We're bad. Don't talk about us as being a model for doing things. We suck, okay? So anyway, vote yes. This is great. I am looking forward to start working with City Care, and our friends really need this space. We all need this safety net because we're losing affordable housing. Thanks.
Marguerite Larson?
Marguerite Larson, Vortex. So, I don't know how to start this, because I've been thinking about this a lot. And I understand that there is money invested. The problem is that when you guys invest this, you're not investing in something permanent. You're investing in something that is just kicking down the road. You need to figure it out. We have an unhoused population that needs this contract. They need a place to go. This is their community. You are going to be disrupting their community. You're going to be throwing them out on in the street with nowhere to go, nothing to do, except roam your streets that all these people are complaining about. Where do you think they're going to go? You should absolutely accept this from City. If you don't like the contract, if you don't think it's working, you have six months to figure out something else. But in the meantime, this is a necessity, and this is something that we should be taking care of our neighbors. These are our people. These are human beings out there, and this is the humane thing to do. Thank you.
Christina Owen? No, Christina. Stephen Ellis?
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I want to thank City Care for being willing to pick up the torch to keep our emergency shelter open. So I'm hoping that you will all vote to keep the shelter going. Let's give this a six-month trial. I think this can work, and it's important that we make it work. I fear it's going to be a tougher task for City Care than they probably know, because the City of Norman has a pretty incoherent approach to our unhoused neighbors. We fund a shelter, yes, but we also harass the homeless where they sleep, and we harass those who don't cooperate in that earlier harassment, mostly via code violation stuff. So if you look at how the City of Norman has been treating property owners that don't trespass people themselves, they get a bunch of code violations. When the behavior being corrected, as the city manager puts it, is simply existing. So if you're arresting people even misdemeanor for trespass, it puts that statistics debate we were discussing earlier somewhat into perspective, as does the council's silence in answering my earlier questions about other analogous kinds of code violations, right? We don't go after people who are currently illegally running businesses out of their homes. We, I mean, I bet there haven't been any code violations on that, and probably a handful of people who are connected because we enforce the law selectively in this town. The Oklahoma standard is notable by its absence here. We Okies are pretty good about helping people suffering from natural disasters, as long as they look like us in class and kind. But we're pretty terrible if those disasters are economic and we can't see those who suffer as like us in some way, and that's something we need to work on. Hopefully, City Care can help with that. I hope their operations in Norman run smoothly, but more realistically, I hope that the difficulties they will have with the city as an official unit and with some citizens of the city are, are not going to drive them away, because this is a service that we need to provide. Turning away people who are desperate right now would be as wrong as closing the doors to, you know, the, setting up city roadblocks at the, at the line with Moore to keep, you know, tornado disaster victims from coming here. It's just a different kind of disaster that everybody, you know, seems in some sense to want to turn their back on. So let's do a good job. Let's sign this contract. Let's hope City Care is able to work with the city government, and let's move forward to try to help people. Thanks.
Hello. Mayumi Winlar, Ward 2. So, one thing, I was concerned about the transition, so I'm glad that there's going to be like that, that first couple of weeks of January. So that is good. It's good to know that the current employees of Food and Shelter can apply to work for City Care. I was concerned about those people all of a sudden not having jobs and then creating more homeless people, which, that's what we're trying to not have. Okay, so, lies, damn lies, and statistics, right? What are the effectiveness numbers of Food and Shelter? What are the effectiveness numbers of City Care? Like, you know, what is the time to get somebody? Like, you know, what is the time to get somebody from, they show up, to get them permanent housing? Are there any kind of statistics like that? No?
There are.
There are? It would be nice to know what those are. You know, if we're trying to, you know, get rid of one and bring in another, how do we know how effective they're going to be? I mean, this is like... When you're going shopping, you do price comparisons, you do, you know, how many ounces of chips do I get in this bag for this price versus this other bag? We need to have numbers. That's it. Thanks.
Alex Lanfier.
Here at Ward Two, I am in favor of giving City Care the contract, because I'm in favor of keeping the shelter open. I know the shelter is not perfect, but the alternative is having 50 people sleeping in doorways on Main Street and camping out all over town. And I think if you close this shelter, that problems will multiply. So please pass this tonight. Thank you.
Ben Plummer.
First off, I would like to say that Ben Plummer, Ward Four. This whole thing is a stall tactic to try to keep the shelter open. Right now, there's a lot of momentum to close it. And if we get a new operator who's somewhat responsible and not kind of a whiny baby and actually does their job well, our momentum to close this will evaporate, and then we'll just wind up with this staying there. As far as, like, April Dosier, she was, as far as I know, she was inviting more people.
Don't attack anybody personally, if you would.
Food and Shelter was inviting more people to come here in retaliation for trying to close down this contract. And what you need to understand is that you can destroy a city with homelessness. If you, if you have resources, if you provide all the resources, the supply of homeless is nearly infinite, and if you provide resources, they'll come here. Property values will drop, and I know, like, who cares if, if homeowners lose their money, you know? But the reason it matters if property values drop is because then nobody wants to move here. And businesses close down because people are not frequenting their shops. And so homelessness creates homelessness. If you have enough of it, you wind up with jobs moving out. You wind up with property values going down, and it creates a vicious cycle where you're sinking more money into the homeless, your tax revenue is going down, your property values are going down, your jobs are moving out. And because your jobs are moving out, because nobody can do business as a consequence of, of people not wanting to frequent those businesses because of the homeless, then you wind up with fewer jobs and more homeless. So you actually, you get into this vicious cycle. There's something basic that people need to understand, and that is human nature is pathologically incorrect. When you, when you study economics, you're studying the ways that humans are wrong. The, the teacher will say, you know, you'll say to the teacher, what about rent control? And the teacher will say, rent control creates housing shortages. You'll say, what about a minimum wage? What about a living wage? The teacher then says, if you have a living wage, you're going to create greater amounts of unemployment. You're learning how your intuition... You're learning how your intuition is wrong when you study econo-
Erin Casey.
Let me remind everybody again that free speech allows everybody to speak, not only those that you agree with. Interjecting things into, into meetings, laughing, making other moments and things like that is an infringement on somebody else's speech. You may not like it, but that's the way that it is. We, we listen to everybody. Thank you for remembering.
Do we have Erin Casey? Chanel Rhodey? Okay.
Thank you. Dear council members, homelessness is a growing concern in Norman, affecting individuals due to various circumstances such as job loss, mental health issues, and domestic violence. As someone who found refuge at a friend's house after seeking, after fleeing an unsafe living situation, I have experienced firsthand the vital role shelters play in our community. During my stay at a friend's house, having a stable place to sleep has been crucial for maintaining employment and planning a better future. Unfortunately, not everyone has the security of a permanent bed. Those forced to leave by 10:00 PM face increased risk of illness, violence, and other dangers. Keeping the shelter open past this hour is not just about providing a bed, but fostering a safe environment that promotes recovery and stability. I am deeply grateful for the support I've received, but I urge you to consider the broader impact. Homelessness infects, affects our entire community's well-being and quality of life. It is not a choice, but a circumstance that requires our compassion and action. I understand there may be concerns about resources or logistics, but I encourage you to look beyond those challenges. Investing in homelessness prevention and support aligns with your mandate to improve community well-being and deliver essential services. Every person without shelter is a part of our community in need of our collective support. I respectfully ask all council members to prioritize humanity and community well-being in your decision-making. Please support measures that keep shelters accessible and safe for those who need them most. Thank you for your attention on this crucial issue. I look forward to seeing Norman taking leadership, a leadership role in addressing homelessness with compassion and practical solutions. Thank you.
Mariah Holick. Not sure if I said that right. Roman Gray.
Page. And at this point in my life, I have been homeless four times in my life. Twice in the state of Oklahoma and twice in the state of Texas. And I have noticed that in my time in, in Norman, Oklahoma, as someone who has been unhoused, I have not seen much more hostile infrastructure and economic. I have been homeless since August 24th of 2024. When I left my housing situation, the only place I was able to go was Food and Shelter in a friend's house. I ask you to seriously consider the fact that we are one of the most discriminated against minorities out here. We may all have different skin color, mental issues, et cetera, but we all have one thing in common, and it's that we all feel attacked by most anti-unhoused movements. There are three places that I'm aware of in the city of Norman that allow us to stay during the day and give us resources. And if this movement goes through and the retaking of ownership by City Care falls through, two of those places will be closed. At a friend's house, the rumor, the rumor of drugs and weapons being brought in are sparsely true. We have, of course, had those incidents happen, but so has every other place where people dwell. A friend's house operates on an honor system. If we are not feeling trapped, there will be no reason for us to fight like cornered animals. I implore you to put in some thought towards the potential closure of Food and Shelter in a friend's house if all situations do fall through. With these final notes, I wish you all a good night, happy holiday, and a wonderful life. Thank you.
Peyton Hefington. Peyton? Zane Wooten? Cynthia Rogers?
Cynthia Rogers, still Ward Four, and still a practicing professor of economics. Yes, human nature. We need to eat. We need shelter. We need a place to go to the bathroom. And we're going to find places to do that. That's what people do. I'm really distraught when people butcher data, because that's what I also do in my day job. And Norman has become so hostile to people who are suffering trauma of being unhoused that it, it really hurts my heart. You know, we make littering a crime if you're unhoused, but oh, you game day, thousands and thousands and thousands of people are littering our town. And so I think we need to be careful about the statistics when we're policing behaviors that unhoused people are caught doing, because they don't have other places to do the things that normal humans do, like sleep, go to the bathroom, put their trash, because they don't have a house with garbage cans handy. So the one thing I know about homelessness, there's no perfect solution. There's no perfect shelter. There's no shelter that everybody's going to be happy with. There's no location that's not going to be in somebody's backyard. And all those are reasons why people will say no, 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 no to all the places we've tried to consider for shelters in town. But we just can't let that be the enemy of getting people off the streets, because I promise you that closing a shelter and having no shelter will be infinitely worse than a poorly operating shelter. This, this claim that the shelter isn't safe, being, sleeping out in the open with nobody around, no protection at all, no monitors there, somebody to call the police if something happens, makes you a lot more unsafe. So that's really a poor straw man argument. So, yes, we need to make, move forward and have progress, but I, I hope that we will entertain giving City Care a shot. Hopefully, it'll be an improvement, and hopefully, we'll find a more permanent situation. Thank you.
Luigi Labani.
Hello. Four. There are many arguments have been made, some of which reasonable. The point is that these people exist. These people will be somewhere. And I think it's the most human thing to do and the best for the city to give them a place to sleep, to stay, to poop. And who's truly doing a disservice to downtown? Who's truly pushing people away from enjoying downtown, leaving downtown, spending money downtown in our lovely businesses are the ones that keep drumming about how downtown is unsafe and terrible and scary and covered in poop. None of this is true. There is single sporadic episodes. As you remember, a few years ago, there was a, last year probably, there was a big deal about poop on Main Street, and it turned out it was a student rather than a homeless person. So we take something that happened, we take it out of context, we make it like this big deal. There is this constant stream of reminders of how bad downtown is that might convince someone not to go downtown, not to shop downtown, not to enjoy Norman. And I lived downtown. I walked up and down all the time. I'm a short-horned man, so, I mean, if someone wanted to start trouble, downtown Norman is safe. The real danger for downtown Norman, the real damage to our businesses, is who keep using this homelessness scare to scare away people, to send them somewhere else. And we were talking about how much this shelter costs. Personally, I'd rather my tax money go to the shelter rather than go to the thief. And you say, yes, no, tax money doesn't go to the thief. Yes, it does. I mean, if you don't collect, basically. So that's a much better, more humane, more Christian, if you want, way to use the city's resources and mine. Thank you.
Rita Cohen.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of Norman City Council. I'm deeply grateful to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the homeless community, because I am a homeless person. And Food and Shelter and Caravan and City Care and Salvation Army, all organizations that help all of us. Tonight, we are here to present a transformation collaboration plan titled Bringing Unity Within Our Community. This plan developed with input from various stakeholders. It aims to significantly enhance community service, specifically through traction debris cleanup along the streets and creeks that lead to our main water recycling plant. By working together, we can improve the efficiency of our water plant and beautify our community. Renovating the cathedral on the grounds of Griffin Memorial Hospital may be as expensive as cleaning up and removing debris from the three buildings along Reed Avenue. One potential solution to assist individuals experiencing homelessness is to establish a temporary service aimed at helping those with addiction, families who lost jobs, veterans who need work back into society. This service could also support families, you know, improve their homes and circumstances, and those wishing to become successful community members in our community. Many veterans and individuals experiencing homelessness feel lost and displaced in our community. We acknowledge the challenge, challenges, and the need to come for a comprehensive support system. While many resources are available, it is essential to establish a solid foundation which, upon which to build upon and provide long-term solutions. Although several resources assist us in families, having a solid foundation supporting our community and supporting the community from the community and our homeless community is crucial. The first contribution from those affected is invaluable in understanding what aspects remain in their journey toward achieving their goals and feeling that their voices matter. We've, we've proposed a plan to help keep Norman beautiful and bring, and foster bringing unity within our community. We all agree that having a committee that appears organized, organized a strategy to address these issues that have cast our community in a negative way would be, you know, be beneficial. As individuals experiencing homelessness in Norman, we face many challenges, including the threat of being attacked, shot at, approached, treated...
Jeanette Coker.
Jeanette Coker, Ward Four. I've gotten up here before and explained why I feel that everything we do regarding the homeless is counterproductive and it's hurting the people who need our help. Nevertheless, homelessness is an issue that is dividing our community. People worked on the arena petition because we think we have a right to vote on anything that affects our city budget that much. Many of the people that I worked with on that petition want a homeless shelter, but they don't want a city citizen vote on it. They say it would never pass in Norman. The people who don't want a city-funded shelter also don't want a citizen vote on it because of all the bleeding heart liberals in town. Personally, I hate all the name-calling and the personal attacks that we're having right now. And I think a vote would be a healthy thing. And it just occurred to me, reading this, I guess it's just me and that one lady that wanna vote, because both sides don't want us to vote on it. It's really weird. Thank you.
Victoria Garcia.
Hi, I'm in Ward Four. I've been here since the storms, and I've worked with people at Food and Shelter many years. I took them to probation parole, moved them in and out of cottages, ate with them, stayed with them all day, gave them money when I could, gave them rides when I could. I love the homeless people. It's not some of their faults that they have mental issues. It's not their faults that they are drug addicts or alcoholics. I'm sure some of them started out slowly, thinking they're just partying, and got hooked. That's why they have federal court about opioids and trying to get people help. Then you have habitual homeless people that don't want any responsibility. They don't wanna pay bills, they don't, they just need money to go get drugs. They just need money to go gamble. They just stay in a little clique. Then you have other people that are in them little cottages that have kids. And I'm here to tell you, some of those kids are in danger. You have a lot of men around there, and women, that are a danger to children, that are not supposed to be there. Anywhere there's a playground, they're not supposed to be, and there's clearly a sign that says it's a playground at Food and Shelter. I see the children walking right by these people, and I know the police know that some of these people are sex predators and things like that. But they're still people. All of them need a place to live. I heard talk about, maybe you all would buy a property and let people have tents. And I think that you guys have seen, they live in the tents. So even if you don't have shelters, they're gonna find a way to have a shelter. It's up to you, do you want it on the street, or could you buy a piece of property and let them go put a tent and not get in trouble? Then they wouldn't be downtown, they wouldn't be in front of businesses. But you'd be helping them.
Paul Wilson.
Evening, Council, Paul Wilson, Ward One. It's kinda funny how we've come to this tonight. Earlier in the morning, or early in the evening, when we first started this, everybody up at the dais is wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving or holiday. And now we've had, coming from the dais, we haven't even signed this contract, and they already wanna know a way to terminate it. Coming up on the holidays, even. Man, that's, that's brutal. I'm in favor of this contract, for one, it'll keep the shelter open. Yeah, we gotta keep the shelter open, keep it going. Food and Shelter's done a great job up until this point. I know there were some discrepancies in our audit, but all in all, they did a really great job. I'm hoping City Care will do the same. And then we also heard tonight that, well, let's get rid of sixty-five affordable houses, and let's get two-hundred-and-fifty student houses. That's a great job. We haven't even had a groundbreaking on the seventy-five unit affordable housing that we voted on, or that you guys voted approved, I believe it was at least last year, if not a year and a half ago. So if you take the sixty-five you took away today, plus the seventy-five you wanna do, you've got, you've gained ten. So where are we at with affordable housing? The best way to keep people off the streets is to keep them in their homes. You keep taking away the affordable housing, and something happens in their family life, I'm pretty sure there's a bunch of people in this room, and even on the dais, if you lost one of your incomes, you'd struggle. You'd have to make terrible choices on what to cut out. These people that are in the shelters, they don't even have that luxury. You close a shelter, they're not gonna go away. They're gonna still be here, you're gonna fifty more people downtown. And yes, Salvation Army is looking to expand to double their capacity. That's great, fifty-four, fifty more beds. Every time we add more beds, that's that many more people off the streets. You want them off the streets, give them a bed. I know when we go to the permanent, the proposed permanent location, we're gonna increase our, our capacity. That's great, that's even more beds. I don't think as many people are being bused to Norman because they're homeless, as most people would like to say. I also don't think in Oklahoma City, they have a group of citizens walking behind them, videoing them, taking pictures of them, harassing them.
Evan Dunn.
Oh, thank you, Council, Evan Dunn, Ward Seven. I think this is a tragic situation. The pervasive lack of purpose that pervades this culture and pervades this country, I think is the main source for people becoming unhoused, for people becoming addicted to narcotics. I commend City Care for stepping up. However, I, my question to them is, what are you doing to educate our, the people who are suffering homelessness, the people who are suffering drug addiction? Are you coordinating with more Norman Technology Center, with the school system, with OU, to bring professors there to give a talk once a night? For an hour, are, are we thinking about that? Are we thinking, oh, okay, hey, let's take five grand and then make some deals with different welders, you know, historians? If we don't make an effort to enhance them and invest in their human potential, we're wasting human potential. I am someone who believes in the near-infinite capacity that the human DNA has for creating transcendent perceptions and syntheses about reality. And I'd love to see that, I'd love to see some initiative. Hey, I will volunteer. I, I teach breathwork classes at the Well. I think breathwork is one of the most fundamental and core components to a healthy, long, collaborative, compassionate, courageous life. If you can't calm down and reflect and understand the sources of your trauma, and empathize, and forgive, and then focus your energy on the acquisition of skills, the, the skills that enable you to add value and make your parents proud of you, make the other, you know, individuals that you know proud to know you. You know, I want the best for everybody. I know staff has worked on this a lot. Hey, there's always more work to do.
Russell Rice.
Russell Rice, Ward Two. I find it kinda funny that six hundred million dollars over twenty-five years is perfectly fine. But six hundred thousand dollars in a year, way too much money. It's a little bit weird, right? Let's see, we all know that I love Norman animal welfare. However, I have to point out that their building costs millions of dollars, and they get like two hundred thousand dollars a month for dogs. So arguing over six hundred and sixty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a month is kinda inhumane. Also, let's point out, the last time that we had a vote on the homeless, it was one of the only things that came anywhere near passing. Their other, the other measures didn't, didn't almost make it, that one did. Also, there was nobody that came, showed up with a gun and armor at Food and Shelter, just to clear the air of that. That's ridiculous, whoever said that needs his head checked. Let's see. There are a handful of folks here that are considered experts on the homeless in Norman. They're asking me to say yes on this, the City Care contract. You should listen to the professionals. Also, busing people out of town that aren't willing is human trafficking. Let's stay away from that, please. That'd be great. Uh, let's see. And lastly, if you don't, if you do not want us to laugh, you shouldn't have a damn circus up here. Clowns, have a good day.
Russell, leave the building, please.
Chelsea Gravel.
Chelsea Gravel, Ward Four. The abatement house had fifty calls in one month. In September, our service providers made many calls to NPD. The overnight shelter had twenty-one calls that particular month. Salvation Army had thirty-eight calls, and Food and Shelter on Reed Avenue had seventy-nine calls. Most were for similar items, such as the calls made with our local high school. I don't know if anybody else has looked into what's going on there, but there are many calls for problems breathing. This could be drugs, but I'm no expert, but sharing that with the community would be a HIPAA violation. I don't know if anybody's looked into what are, what's going on with our high school, but there is a drug problem in Norman, and this is also hurting our city with our providers that are using our shelter. The crimes the homeless are committing, our robbery, assault, and battery, and many are tripping on drugs and breaking into homes, as we've seen in these last few months. We also have a sexual predator free in our city, his name is Cody. He's asking for sexual favors from fourteen and fifteen-year-old girls in the streets of downtown Norman. This is with City Care. And I've witnessed him selling drugs in the parking lot of Food and Shelter in downtown Norman, just over here, on Gray. Based on the many conversations I've had with the homeless in our city, going out and interviewing them, they do not feel safe staying at our shelter. Having a shelter is not a good idea in Norman. The shelter provider does not want to help anyone and doesn't want anyone staying at the shelter that requires or requests help. This is known by many who have reached out to Norman neighbors, our Facebook page, who were previous employees who April has fired for many different reasons that are not legitimate. City Care isn't able to offer enough services to, for us to sign an agreement for them to offer us a shelter. Norman deserves more, and our homeless deserve more. People deserve to sleep indoors and not out in the cold. If we agree to the new contract, the new shelter provider will say goodbye to the services offered at Hub 107, as the county will not offer duplicate services. This will be more money saved for the county, yay, we know they're all hurting, as the city will have to pay City Care Inc. for the same assistance that Hub 107 is currently providing, with no takers that are currently interested in housing, addiction, or job service assistance. Those are all offered, they also help felons at Hub 107. There are no takers interested in this. That does not work. You are coming up this the wrong way, that is why we continue to fight this for over a year, is you are not addressing any of the problems. Hub 107, being part of the continuum of care, doesn't provide duplicate services. If we do not sign the contract with City Care Inc., we can donate the contract money to the Oklahoma City Shelter. They are in a building where they do not have to turn anyone away. There is a hundred and forty beds and mats. All of our homeless could sleep indoors, but that is up to you. You are choosing to force them to sleep outdoors by having this shelter in our town. Thank you.
Carlinda.
Don't start it till I get here. Carlinda Gravel, Ward Four. No one responded. Why? Why? You know, I'm in a business where I take, I have a plea that I put out, I want this built, I want this done, and I get bids, and I can compare them. This is an eighty-nine thousand dollar startup, and we don't even know if it's any good. We had a hundred and thirty-seven homeless waiting for a bed, rotating for a month. That was in the reports that you guys received at one point, if you looked through all the documents, you would have seen that. That's almost two and a half times our fifty-two bed. There's a shelter that doesn't turn anyone away. What's your goal? Is your goal to get people a bed? Get them a bed, get them out of the cold, even in our winter months, fifty-two beds is all we're gonna have. What's gonna happen to the rest of the people that get one or two nights there that float among the beds that aren't reserved? Because half of the facility is reserved, it's a permanent shelter. Could we get in trouble for that, running a permanent shelter? By the way, the advertisement that Food and Shelter does around the nation about having services here in a shelter, City Care does that too, nationwide, advertises Norman. So if you think it's gonna stop with the number that are here or coming here, it's not. It's not gonna stop. Have you looked at the contract? They're gonna do drug tests on all of the workers, wonder if that hadn't been done already. Why? Why has it not been done? Are we gonna be notified when they clean out the plumbing on a regular basis? Because that's up to them, and we won't know if it's filled with needles every single month, we won't know. That's what the library was having, the library was having to have a plumber come out three times a week to clean needles out of the toilets. People can go to the bathroom, it's pretty private in there for doing whatever it is you wanna do. We need to get people a bed. There's no reason for the people that aren't causing trouble in our city, that will follow the rules at the shelter. According to the community, we were told that was a hundred and thirty-seven people, I believe it was last month. What's your goal in this? Are you, is your goal to be, oh, I wanna be re-elected, oh, I'm gonna put a name for myself while I'm on the dais, while I'm on council? You can get those hundred and thirty-seven people a bed, right now, with their dogs. You, you asked how many people they have, they have enough beds for everybody? They have enough for people to come and bring their dogs, they've got room for four families? They've got everything that we've all been salivating for. They keep the people there, they make sure there's a bed for everyone. No one is out roaming their downtown businesses and putting them at a stress of getting customers. What's gonna happen around the holidays? You've seen Norman neighbors, Norman neighbors Facebook page, Bringing Awareness to the Homeless Crisis. We will continue to do that, and we will post photo documentation. If you haven't seen the photo documentation of some of the people that are floating around our downtown, I would encourage you to take a strong, hard
Um, I wanted to speak to some of the questions that were raised, and I will look to our attorney, Rick Knighton, for some history. The first thing that jumped out was the history of city-run shelters. And I was gonna say, the Comanche Street Shelter was not our first. And the first one was at the library, and who funded it?
The first one was at the library, and it was funded by the city, that's correct.
And how did the city find the money? And how did the city find the money?
Somehow through the finance department, um, in conjunction with the city manager in terms of the city's general fund.
It was very short in duration, that first outing. Uh, we had a pretty short runway in between, uh, third-party shelter offerings and our ability and actually the police department and the community development block grant group, uh, were able to pull that together. But the funding, I do believe, was general fund.
Okay. And then somebody asked, McFarland was the one that started, uh, Shelter Service in Norman and they were not, I think Food and Shelter had run a shelter previously and the reason that we needed to open one was because they had not renewed a grant, thus we would have had a winter without a shelter. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
All right. So, uh, facts matter. I went Googling during the comments. Um, Homeless Alliance is the operator on Virginia Street and they opened, they're in their second season, um, a winter shelter, night only. Um, so at the end of the winter season, they close up. And I thought it was interesting to note that when they closed up, issues sprung up. So it's seems like closing a shelter here would cause more issues than they would resolve. Um, I take issue with the bleeding heart liberals comment. City Council is nonpartisan and homelessness affects everyone. In fact, I got to know a veteran who stays at our shelter. I'm not sure if he's found something since. Um, who definitely is not a bleeding heart liberal and has some interesting opinions. But I'm happy that he has a bed at night and he is one of generally, you know, between 10 to 15 veterans that stay at that shelter. We've also had pregnant women in addition to domestic violence victims stay at that shelter. Um, let's see. Then, uh, to note that we are the second fastest growing city in Oklahoma. Um, I don't really think that homelessness is gonna deter all the students coming, uh, in record numbers with each OU class, nor their parents, nor, uh, the short-term rental community who wants to come visit during some of the game days or our festivals. Um, let's see. Yes, uh, somebody mentioned something about day labor services and we are looking into that. I do not think a shelter is the whole answer. It is a piece in the puzzle. Um, and so that service will support social services to help people with their addictions. And part of the way that we're funding that is, um, through the opioid abatement grant. So, and I will say for this particular shelter that we're talking about getting into a contract with City Care, who is not Homeless Alliance. Um, they said in our study session last week that they do job training. Um, and to help people who need affordable housing, but maybe cannot afford it on their own. They, like Bridges, which already operates in Norman, help people team up and afford housing together if they're a good fit, you know? These things take finesse. Um. I'm encouraged to hear somebody talk about campgrounds. Um, you know, that would solve a lot of problems. If you didn't wanna see it off of Reed and we just heard from city manager saying that municipal charges, people can't really pay the tickets for trespassing or littering. Um, throwing them in jail is not gonna help them get out of homelessness any faster. Um. Oh, and I'll just say this. For those that are concerned about safety, this new contract actually outlines, besides the walkthrough metal detector, a defibrillator because we do care about the health of folks. Um, the housing navigation part is like the extra we're getting for what we're paying. And if we really wanna see people move out of homelessness, they're gonna need a place to land, whether it's in a, you know, a shared living arrangement where somebody's helped them find, you know, one of those magical $500 to $650 apartments in Norman. So anyways, those are just my comments on what was said tonight.
Further comments from council? Yes.
A few comments about what was said tonight. Uh, according to our home-based study, which obviously is way wrong, because they say we have what, 264 homeless people in the city when our police records show that 600, what, 700 unique individuals were arrested this year alone. So, but let's just use a home-based study anyway, since it's the best we have and we don't wanna spend money to figure out what the problem is here. Uh, 54% of individuals that claim to be homeless have lived in Cleveland County less than one year. Those aren't your neighbors. That's not somebody here from Norman who couldn't afford rent because their charities help with that. These are people from out of town. They're transients. And we will, we're all about helping anybody from here in Norman. We're all about helping anybody from anywhere. But we don't wanna attract more of a crisis and more of a problem here. And that's what our current shelter does. Um, number two, this money doesn't come from rich people that's supporting our shelter. Anthony, where, where, where does the money come from? From sales tax, right? And who pays sales tax? Every single person who lives, shops and plays here in Norman. So that's all of us. It's not coming from rich people. It's coming from your tax dollars. Um, and I know if we take out a few misdemeanors, property crimes, trespassing, things that affect you personally, thefts off your front porch, things like that, yeah, if we ignore those, yeah, the crime statistic may go down to 7%, but when we add those back in there, you know, the crimes that we are all held accountable to, except for a certain population group here, that number goes way, way up. It is a lot closer to what was said. Um. Solutions. Daryl asked earlier, if that's something happened to that shelter, would you be able to find a place for it? Would you bet your job that in 45 days, if we don't close this shelter or if we do cancel this contract and don't renew it with City Care? Would you bet your job that you could find a place for 53 people in 45 days?
For a short term, I think we absolutely could.
Well, I hope we get to find that out. So that's all I got.
Councilmember Dixon.
Uh, just thanks, everybody, for coming and expressing your, your thoughts tonight. I've heard a lot of really good arguments for and against. You know, taking out the, the emotional arguments, um, that have been made, I just keep coming back to this went to a vote of the people. And it, it didn't pass. Uh, the majority of people that came out and voted that day said, no. We don't want to spend $5 million on a permanent homeless shelter. So here we are trying to cleverly subvert the will of the voter. And I, I just can't get past that. And I think, um, yeah, I just can't get past that.
Anything else from council? Oh, yes, sir.
So a few things. If we want to talk about the elections in 2020 and the four bond items that were on it. Uh, number one was parks and recreational community facilities, uh, extra funding for the YFAC and the senior center and other projects. It failed 41%. Voted yes, 58% voted no. Uh, the city still invested money into the YFAC to get it completed and the senior center, which many people in this room and on this council supported. Proposition number three, municipal facilities, which included improvements and a remodel to the police department, failed by 61%. But earlier in the previous meeting, we were talking about spending money on remodeling the police department. Proposition number four, economic and community development projects, small business relief because of COVID, failed 59%. Proposition number two, homeless shelter and community facilities. 22,803 votes were cast on that issue. It failed by 50.8%. It failed by, out of 22,000, almost 23,000 votes cast, failed by 369 votes. Four of the eight wards voted for it and four of the eight wards voted against it. If you look at a map, a precinct map of Norman, in that election, you'll see that all of core Norman, all the areas most impacted by visible homeless voted for it. The further you got away from it is where people voted no. The people that are least impacted by it voted no. The people most impacted by it voted yes. And you all are welcome to see this data for yourself. It's available on the Oklahoma State Election Board website. That proposal was a $5 million bond to build a permanent shelter that had no location and no plan at all. It was a response to COVID and the anticipation that we were likely going to see an increase in homelessness due to people losing their jobs, be getting, getting sick, their husband, their wife dying. I'm all for sending this to a vote of the people, actually, because I think it will pass. Because I think Norman cares about this issue. And every meeting that we've had about it, I keep a tally. Every meeting that we've had about this issue, more people speak in favor of the shelter than against it. Please feel free to fact-check me on that. To construct a new permanent shelter will require money that I think will require a vote of the people for some kind of bond to do it. Unless we can find an existing building, which we haven't been able to do. The one that we looked at on Griffin is apparently not suitable and they're not interested in letting us use it. The piece of property we're looking at doesn't have anything on it, so we would have to build something. And the city of Norman does not have the money lying around to build a new building. So we will need a public vote, in my opinion, to approve funding to do that. But voting no on building a permanent shelter has not stopped homelessness from increasing in Norman. In the last decade, Norman has grown by over 20,000 people. As was mentioned, we're one of the fastest growing cities in the state of Oklahoma. We're in the top six of SEC cities in population growth and growth rate over the last 10 years. Our population has more than double the growth of Moore in the last 10 years. More than Edmund. And we're only slightly behind Tulsa in total population growth over the last decade, even though they are a much larger city than we are. A lot of folks that talk about increase in homeless act like it happens in a vacuum, as in homeless has increased, but the city of Norman isn't growing. That our population is not growing, but it is. And we're growing exponentially more in total population than our homeless population is growing. We are having severe issues with housing affordability, a high demand. The latest MBR, Norman Board of Realtors, report shows that the home values in Norman exceed the metro area average. That means people want to be here. The property in Norman is valuable. People want to build homes in Norman, drive around Norman, and you will see construction happening absolutely everywhere. I have $400,000 plus homes being built in my ward right now, south of Highway nine. We've had over a dozen new businesses open in downtown Norman since this shelter opened two years ago, several of which relocated from somewhere else in Norman so they could be on Main Street. Two brand-new restaurants are opening. One already, Tomashi, spent a million dollars on renovating the building they're in so they could open a restaurant there. They're right one block from this shelter. Why would they do that? Why would they invest all that money into that building right next to that shelter? If it's such an undesirable place to be. Salvation Army opened in Norman in 1967 on North Porter, providing shelter to homeless people. Salva, or Food Salvation Army's Food and Shelter for Friends opened in 1981, right here on James Garner Boulevard, where the well is currently. And it was there from 1981 until 2017. Yet folks act like this is a new thing. Never existed before 2020, before the previous mayor was here. But I grew up here and so did my dad and so did my grandfather and so did my great-grandfather. And it has always been here. It's been here as long as Griffin Hospital has existed in this city, which is over 100 years. As someone mentioned, the animal shelter. The current budget for the animal shelter is $200,000 per month. And we all love animals and we wanna take care of them. But what's the priority? That's over four times, almost four times, the amount that we're proposing to spend on this shelter for people to keep them from freezing to death. Oklahoma is one of, if not the, most inhospitable place in the United States to be homeless. There is no good time in this state to live outside. It is freezing cold in the winter. It is boiling hot in the summer. It's 95 degrees at, in the middle of the night at 3:00 AM in July and August. And in the spring and the fall, we have severe weather where you get softball-sized hail and tornadoes and 90 mile an hour winds. This month of November, the most rain we've ever had in a November in state history since they started recording it. Imagine living outside in Oklahoma through all of that and thinking that people would choose to do it. Choose to live here of all places. If you're gonna be homeless, why would you choose here? Why? It is extremely inhospitable. Politics aside, the environment and the climate here is not favorable to being outside, uh, for extended periods of time. I've said before that I would agree to close this shelter the moment that another viable alternative is in place. The moment another location is available, I would vote to move this shelter out of downtown. And if any other entities came forward to fund the operation of a shelter, I would remove the city from being a part of that. The city operated the original shelter in the library and it went really well. The city operated the shelter on Comanche Street and there were issues. And we determined that we did not wanna be in the business of operating a shelter anymore. So what did we do when we moved it to Gray Street? We put out an RFP and asked for proposals for someone else who's more specialized in operating a facility like that to do it instead of the city. We are providing the funding to operate it. They don't get any handouts while they're there. They get a bed to sleep in. There's no shower. There's no place for their pets. There's no food provided unless volunteers make it themselves and drop it off. They literally just get a bed to sleep in every night. And they get connected to services that we have. And over the last two years, they have helped hundreds of people get out of homelessness in Norman, off the streets, temporary shelter and into permanent supportive housing. Hundreds of people. They have saved people's lives, that shelter existing. So when I hear folks talk about it's a disaster, it's a debacle, it hasn't done anything positive, you are wrong. You are absolutely wrong. It has saved people's lives. Again, this is an extremely emotional issue. I'd like to be able to take the emotion out of it and I usually can. But with this issue, we're talking about people's lives. And we're talking about people who feel inconvenienced by the sight of this. But you're not thinking about the people that are actually in that situation and what they're going through. It may be bad for you, but think about how bad it is for them. They have to sit around and wonder every day if this elected body, who is up for election every two years, is gonna decide to kick them out on the street or not. And I agree with a lot of what it said. Um, we don't have a silver bullet solution. I'm not proposing a silver bullet solution and none of us up here have been able to come up with the solution to homelessness in Norman. But I can tell you right now, for as long as homelessness exists and as long as Norman continues to grow in population and size, that's going to be an issue that we're gonna have to deal with. One way or the other, there's going to be people suffering from mental illness and physical disabilities. There's gonna be people that cannot afford to live here, that work at McDonald's and all the other drive-throughs and service industry jobs we have across this city. And so we do need more comprehensive solutions. I agree that what we've been doing has been keeping a Band-Aid on an issue. We've been trying to manage it. But we can't do it ourselves, we know. Uh, even though we often feel like the city that we're being put in a position where we have to take on this issue for the whole county. being put in a position where we have to take on this issue for the whole county. So I am gonna support this, and I'm gonna continue supporting it until another viable option is in place that would address this situation. Because as many of you said, just closing it with nothing else in place is not going to improve this situation. And moving the shelter is not going to change the fact that there are people with mental illness that wander around this city. Those people aren't staying at the shelter now, so moving it isn't going to change that. So anyway, I could go on and on about it, but I am gonna support this, and I'm gonna support, continue to support and propose and explore any other options. And as I've said before, if you have any suggestions for where we could move this shelter or what could take its place, but temporary hotel rooms for a few nights is not going to do it, and there aren't that many available. We are out of housing vouchers. HUD is not funding Norman Housing Authority anymore this year. The waiting list is a year long, if you can get a voucher, and then once you get one, you have 90 days to use it, and if you can't find a place, then you gotta start all over. So imagine yourself having to go through that process. So anyway, that's it. I'm gonna vote yes.
Thank you. Not to disagree with you or to counter back, but I see it as a different way of looking at things. I would agree, if there were such a thing as a solution, if we could find that answer, and I think there are people that are looking for that answer, I'd be on your side of voting yes for this, and I'm not. As a function of a municipal government, I can understand any kind of infrastructure, almost any kind of infrastructure type of idea, anything that's like that. But I don't see us being a welfare or social or...I'm not sure what the right word is. We're not that driver. That is not part of our function. It is a function of Salvation Army, of Food and Shelter, of other good people that do, try to do good things around here. That's their function. To me, it seems like if a person wants to sit down there and support, give money towards homelessness, those are the people that they need to give them to. When we take tax money, we take it indiscriminately from everybody. We don't ask people, you know, should we spend it on this, that, or the other? But I think when I go around, I must be in a completely different group of people than you are, because there are people that answer me, and they say, "We don't want our tax money spent that way." And so, and I get both. I understand that. Remember, I did eight years as a jail chaplain. I was three years at Mission Norman. Those are times that I understood a lot of what was going on, and I have complete compassion for those people. But the fact is, is it the city's responsibility or is it society's responsibility to take care of those people? And so as we look at society, the government is not society to me. So I'm gonna vote no on this. I agree with you that we spend too much money on animals, but I'll get beat up for saying that, so it's just one of the things that goes on. And this thing does keep on continuing forever, and so finding a solution to it is frustrating, and it's hard, and there are a lot of emotions that go into it. But if we look at it just as a purely taking care of people, taking care of what goes there, I think that that's a function of the charities, those kinds of people. United Way, I wish, would do it, but obviously, they're not gonna do it. So my vote on this is no. Are there any other comments from council?
Councilmember Nash.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah. Well, the wonderful thing about wedge issues is it just takes a little minor tweak to make everybody hate each other. We just make half of them turn against the other so that neither side looks at themselves as other human. And with this issue, this is a popular wedge issue, because all it takes is a little tweak, and suddenly, something that everybody would otherwise agree on, now they're at each other's throats. Now, because the funny thing is that if you take anybody, anyone in Norman, right or left side of the aisle, ask them, "Do you think that we should help children that are facing homelessness?" Yes. What about mothers with children? Yes. What about domestic abuse victims? Everybody's got this imaginary bar in their head that somebody has to surpass before they are deserving of assistance in every individual's mind. Now, when you keep going up the ladder, what about just regular Joes that just got fired, males, you know, whatever? Yeah, probably. Most people would say yes. Some people would strictly stated, women, children, elderly, veterans. What about active drug users? Now, people are starting to disagree. What about sex offenders? What about people who just got out of prison? In fact, we keep going. What about active fugitives from justice that are on the lam? At that point, I think most people are gonna say, "No, we've..." People have hit their limit. But all we have to do is make a little tweak and say, "One side wants to help everybody, including sex offenders, active drug users, regardless of if they want to get clean." And now the other side's gonna be with fear, they're gonna be terrified, they're gonna say at each other's throats, they're gonna be arguing to the death. No, no, they absolutely can't. They're gonna start assuming the worst in either side. Then when there's any ambiguity, it's gonna be, those blanks are gonna be filled in with biased assumptions that are going to automatically paint the other side as this monster. And that's where we've arrived, to this point where we can't even have any honest discussions about this topic without being attacked. Whether it's being attacked because we're wanting to open this thing up to everybody, including rapists next to schools and active dope slingers, or maybe we just don't have any heart at all, because it would be the moral thing to do to help anybody and everybody in need. No, but, you know, there's a few things that it unfortunately prohibits us from even discussing that are very critical elements to this whole situation. Now, the homeless aren't being bussed in. That's stupid, and that's a ridiculous concept. I'm at a loss for where that even comes from, except for maybe just very imaginative people. But unhoused people do come to Norman. We know that as a fact. We know that Moore's Police Department, when they pick up homeless, they bring them here to the shelter, the services. We know that's their police chief's policy. We know that if there's anybody picked up between here and Winnet in Cleveland County and taken to the jail, that jail's here in Norman. When they finish their business, they open the door and say, "See ya." So then now we've got the sheriff bringing unhoused individuals here, too. And, you know, if we ignore that, if we pretend like these don't exist, that makes this a very difficult problem to solve, because now we've got this unbounded problem that we're trying to solve, that we could sling a thousand beds at it, but if we don't acknowledge the conduits that are bringing them in, then we could just keep throwing beds at it all day long, deplete the entire general fund, and we're not gonna get anywhere. But if we start looking at the actual factors, the real factors, even if we don't want to acknowledge them, like the secondary resources that are exhausted with this. Anecdotally, heard from Norman police that nearly all their calls are for homeless-related issues. Numerically, that doesn't really have any value, but in terms of workload and just mental bandwidth, that's their perception is that almost all the calls are for this one issue. Our municipal court, like half the, you know, 40 to 50% of their cases are with unhoused individuals. That's resources that are being spent on this situation. If we acknowledge that there's a certain amount that are causing problems, a certain amount of troublemakers, it's probably not the majority. Let's say, for example, it's 50. Maybe there's 50 out of 300 unhoused individuals that are causing all the problems. Well, now, now we've got a problem that's got a scope to it, a finite scope that we can actually start to address. Okay, so we got 50 individuals that are very enterprising individuals, causing all the crimes, whatever. How are we going to try to move them through the system, get to housing, I don't know, whatever, get them off the streets so they're not causing the problems? I don't know. But that's a conversation we're not allowed to have, because we're treated as monsters whenever we bring up that one fact, that, yeah, there's a lot of crime that's being caused by these individuals, and if there's a lot of crime that's being caused by individuals, that bothers people, and we would like to prioritize getting those criminals off the But, you know, then we've got a matter of efficiency with paying $1,000 a bed a month. Now, what if there were a place in South OKC that is more efficient operation, because they do this all the time, can have maybe $250 per bed per month? So that they could, in effect, have 200 beds a month instead of our 50? Well, we can't even explore that route, because then, again, we're treated as monsters. Because if we bring up that idea that, well, we could get more bang for our buck, help more people by looking at this other direction, well, now we're monsters, because we're talking about pushing them out of Norman. That's cutting off the ability to have any kind of dialogue between the two sides that have honest questions, that have...both sides want to find a solution to this problem, but we're bickering over small details. Low barrier shelter, yeah, so maybe nationally, it's the best way to go. Well, if we know that the only difference between full public buy-in is letting in the active drug users and, I don't know, the sex offenders, whatever, well, then why can't we talk about having a tweak of the policy to exclude those two? So now the whole town is behind it, instead of just half of it, disregarding the other half's desires. And it's, at the end of the day, this is public money, and we can't just sit up here and unilaterally decide that this public money is going to go to this thing when there's a significant number, you know, amount of the population that's against it. In Ward 5, it's pretty easy for me to derive the consensus in Ward 5. The knocking doors, both sides of the aisle are tired of this problem, they want to see some kind of noticeable improvement. They don't know how to get there. More often than not, the proposed solution is to shut it all down. Is that the right route to go? I don't know. But then I also don't know if we can do any good throwing more beds at this problem. Because say if there are, you know, if there are advertisements that advertise when we have open beds, then sure, we could keep opening beds, and it can keep filling up, and it's just gonna grow ad infinitum. It probably doesn't. But those are the kind of things that we need to know and understand before we start committing money to the problem, and we can't understand them if we can't talk about them. But, you know, what is, what's the most, the moral thing to do here? I don't know, probably keep it open. What's the ethical thing to do? Ward 5 wants, it was pretty clear, they're tired of this experiment, and they want it to close. Makes it a little bit easier to, you know, to vote, knowing that I'm pretty sure, just my crystal ball, I'm pretty sure it's gonna pass. I could be wrong. That's something that if, you know, if I'm wrong, then that's something I'll be thinking over while I sleep on the couch tonight. But, you know, we need to be able to understand this entire situation. It means that we need to be able to be honest about the entire situation, because we need to limit the scope of what we're trying to accomplish, instead of just throwing money into an unbounded problem that we don't have any identifiable goals or measures of merit. And, yeah, it's nice to put money into something that's ongoing, because we know that it's doing the right thing, it's helping people. There's always people in need. Doesn't matter where you go, there's always going to be people in need. We can't help them all, and when we have a limited budget, we need to come to that, we need to grapple with that simple fact that we can't help them all. Where do we draw the line? Well, we need a firm grasp on what we're trying to accomplish first. Now, did Norman vote against a homeless shelter? No. They voted against an item that had the proposed homeless shelter under very specific conditions, terms and conditions, not against the concept, otherwise, you know, by that same logic, we also voted against improvements to the YFAC and senior center. But, you know, I still think that we need to be able to have some honest discussions about what we're trying to accomplish with this, besides just, we want to throw money at it forever. Because, say, most of the problem is that what the people have is just people out in the streets during the day. It's not 24 hours, so they're still gonna be out on the street during the day, even if it had a billion beds. With a billion beds, I'm sure a few could hide in there and stay in there during the day, but, you know, we can't even explore these smaller achievable goals if we can't actually talk about all the aspects of the problem. And when we're attacked for even bringing it up, that makes it very difficult to try to come up with a reasonable approach to solving a problem that's, you know, got limitations to it, we've got measures of merit, we know that we're going to achieve something, we know that if we're not. And, I don't know, I think we do need to have something to help people, even if we're to narrow it down to find out, you know, how many of these are from other states. You know, we should help everyone, but most people in Norman, they'll draw the line if they're, say, a sex offender from Kansas, but people from Norman, people want to help. Our neighbors, people want to help. We're still gonna have full beds, whether we narrow the scope to Norman residents only or to people actively looking for housing, or people actively trying to get off drugs. We're still gonna fill up all the beds. So if we're gonna fill up all the beds anyways, then why are we even talking about bringing those barriers down? And that's an honest question. I don't know why it's important to have all of those barriers down when we can't even service all of those people. But, yeah, and it's...I hope to be able to talk, to learn more about this situation over the next few months, and I hope that we see some measurable, some observable and obvious improvement to the situation downtown with, you know, with this new operator. Sounds like they're really good at finding people. Sounds like they're really good at finding people housing. I'm very optimistic that they're going to be able to do a lot of good, get a lot of people into permanent housing, but, but I don't know. We'll see. But I'd be betraying the ward and stick to what I know the ward is wanting right now. And I can go and advocate for it at the doors if I understand the, the situation better. Maybe if we can get public buy-in without having to betray half of the town, then we can more reliably put something, you know, bond issue on, you know, as a proposition that'll pass a vote. I think we can easily get there if we start looking for that overlapping area, which is a very large overlap between the two sides of this, this debate. So I think that's probably it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Henkel?
Yeah, there's been several times said tonight that this issue is not, there's not a silver bullet for something that we can do to solve this problem. And it's not just a problem that exists in Norman, it's a problem that exists all across the United States in various capacities. But to say it's not a social issue, it absolutely is a social issue. Whether you're experiencing homelessness or mental health issues or anything like that, it is a social issue that trickles down and affects the person having the experience themselves or the business owners in Norman or other communities, as well as citizens and the things that bring up the emotions that we've heard tonight. So the way that I view this, with, with us all acknowledging that there is no absolute solution, then the way that we would move forward is just to find progress. And I think that engaging with City Care really gives us an opportunity to advance towards a type of progress that we've been looking for. A type of progress that will help us take the next steps into finding a solution that maybe works for Norman, a solution that works in a social capacity. I just think of, I think of all of the people in our community, literally an army of people that raise money, do things for nonprofits, give rides, cook meals, all of these things to help serve a community that is really at the lowest point in their lives. And would we, would we say no to a citizen of Norman if their house was on fire and not provide them a social service of a fire truck coming out to their house? I mean, really, that's, that's the granular, granular level, level that I want to look at this at. Because I really think that if we don't do something about this to make progress, one, obviously, it's not going to get better, but we're never going to be able to stop kicking the can down the road. Because if you could keep doing the same thing over and over and over again and expect a different outcome, that's literally the definition of insanity, in my opinion. So I wish that we could all look at this without having such an emotional lens, but I know it's an emotional lens, that it will always be. But the people who are affected by it in different ways, that is their right and we owe progress to everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Councilmember Grant?
Yes, would Anthony Pearnton answer some questions? I just want to touch on the sex offender situation. It's my understanding that based on the location of the current shelter and even potentially the Griffin site that we're looking at, that those wouldn't be green zones?
Norman basically doesn't have any green zones, and that's kind of one of the barriers that exist currently. That is something I think that the current provider or the proposed provider of City Care has picked up on. That's one of the first things that they looked at. And so, what, wherever this contract comes out, it doesn't change state law. And if, if, for that particular person and their, their particular crime, if that means that they can't stay at the shelter, this contract won't change that.
And then I would just speak to the transient nature of things we deal with. It's been noted that there's providers in our community from which people come from other communities to get services. By connecting with the shelter or other services, it is possible for people to get bus tickets home or, in the case of maybe being a sex offender, get a ticket to someplace they can stay.
Yeah, and so, and that is, you know, the, in terms of the bus passes, I think that, you know, I know Food and Shelter has provided that. I think some other agencies within the continuum have provided that. A lot of the times it's based on whether or not they have a, a place to land and a plan where they're going. And as for the, you know, the individuals who are sex offenders who need a place to stay, I think that that is, again, one of the barriers that exist in Norman. And, you know, the goal is to find everyone, I think, a, a place where they can legally stay. And I think, you know, that is one of those puzzle pieces. And I think we have a, you know, a provider who is very knowledgeable in Oklahoma City, a place that does have green zones. So, you know, in order to connecting those people with those resources, I don't know if any of our continuum would have the depth and breadth of knowledge of, you know, those opportunities for those individuals than City Care. So I think that in that regard, this, you know...
So potentially they could help them find a green zone. And as we've established, there are no green zones in Norman.
For the most part, yes.
Okay, so this highlights that we are not a no-barrier shelter, we are a low-barrier shelter. And I'll just say this, for the Home Based Study and Action Plan, they talked about transportation and effective communication and coordination of our limited services. So when we sometime, and maybe it comes through municipal court, but sometimes when we see people running afoul of trespassing or littering or public disturbance, you know, when we find out that they came from a service, some of those people aren't homeless, they just can't get back home. Is that correct?
Can you define, like, the service?
Well, I was just thinking about, like, Planning Commission a couple Januaries ago where a guy was released from Griffin and it turned out he actually lived in Midwest City, but there was just no coordination to get him back to his city.
Yeah, and so that is, you know, that can be a, a real issue for some folks.
Same for the jail.
Yeah.
Since we're talking about people that can end up in Norman because of Cleveland County. And then for potentially busing people to OKC because they have resources, it's not as though we've talked with OKC, especially South OKC area, even though it is in Cleveland County, about coordinating any of that. That's not been a discussion point anywhere.
So, could you repeat that?
To Councilmember Nash's point about potentially busing people to OKC because they might have better services, that's not something we've coordinated with another city to do. And it's not like City Care would take people to South OKC.
Not to, well, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I will say from a prosecutor standpoint, you know, in municipal court on these specialized dockets that we have, when we know we're going to have a larger number of, you know, people experiencing homelessness, we have someone from the Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center who's there who can offer them resources. If there's a resource in Oklahoma City that, you know, you know, that particular person, you know, maybe there is no resource for that person in Norman that's specific to their need, maybe that is something, you know, that they can help them, connect them with. And we have a, you know, free bus system that connects them to Oklahoma City, just like, you know, you may, you know, have to transport yourself to Oklahoma City if you work in Oklahoma City. If there's a service you need in Oklahoma City, maybe it's necessary to do that and we can connect them with that. That doesn't necessarily mean they remain in Oklahoma City. But I wouldn't necessarily say that, you know, these providers have to get very creative and, you know, trying to come up with solutions tailored to their clients. And that might be one of them.
Well, it seems like City Care is pretty plugged in if there are resources in the city. I do know that there were folks staying at a friend's house under Food and Shelter's watch that have gone up to Sister Youth, for example, for the young adults, I think it's 18 to 24, if I'm not mistaken, who could not find resources in Norman but were able to wait at a friend's house until a resource opened for them in OKC. So, I mean, not to say that we don't have effective communication sometimes, but it could always be improved. Also, I'll just say this, we're, with this contract, not expanding beds, but adding a bathroom, correct?
Yeah, that's the goal.
Okay. Just want to make that clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Does City Care collect IDs?
So, no, they would not require IDs in order to gain entry into the shelter.
And we, I've heard some kicking around the idea of a partnership with the county, which seems like it would be sort of an ideal scenario considering where, you know, being the county seat, sort of, whether we like it or not, the, the assistance in the county. I, I know that, I don't think the sheriff can afford to go to the bathroom indoors either, so I'm sure that's off the table, but the county itself, is, we talked about maybe some resources that we can share with, like to assist us with these efforts?
You're asking me, sir?
I don't know, whoever might know.
We've, we've talked about that in the past and, and, and worked on things. One of the commissioners had the law changed that let the county out of, it used to be prior to the, the last session, that the county was actually responsible for indigent people, the way that I read the law. I'm not an attorney, Rick, I'll tell you that. And the thing is, is that that law has now changed so that we have no position to work with them. Do we work with them? I talk to them all the time. Is there a way? Is there a way? And they do with me as well, but nothing formal. I think you're on, onto an idea, though. This is not a Norman problem, this is a Norman more, I don't know if Noble has, a problem, but, and it's a problem that has lingered. When my, I had my shop in late 70s and early 80s, there were homeless people here living. And so it was a different thing. They were ignored at that time, it wasn't a, a center. Working with the county to me would be a good idea, but it's, it's extraneous to this question because what we have to do is figure out if we want to go with City Care, but I think that that would be a great idea. If you'd like to explore that with me, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, one more question. The City Care contract for the, these service providers advertising places across the country, I don't know if that's true or not. At the very least, can we, if it is true, if there is any kind of shred of truth to it, have a clause that prohibits advertising Norman to outside of here?
Be happy to have that conversation. I had not heard that type of marketing campaign in the past, but we'll be on the phone with them tomorrow morning and get details and let them know that we would prefer not to advertise services outside the county. We love county partners to participate in sharing the cost.
All right. And with finite resources, we need to put some kind of containment on it. Like I said, I don't know if that's, that's true, if that is a, but if that is a possibility, that's a potential outflow of our resources that we're not anticipating. Need to be able to anticipate all aspects of this problem. That's all my questions.
Well, and it'd also be if we did a bonded, wouldn't we need to do part of that with ad verum taxes and that'd take the counties? Okay. So, again, going back to that conversation, I think it's an excellent idea. Anyway, the motion on the floor is to approve the contract.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the contract passes by a vote of five to four. Voting against, Councilmember Dixon, Councilmember Nash, sorry, I wrote all this down wrong. Mayor Heikala and Councilmember Ball.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, it's late.
You got it?
Yes, sir.
All right, item number 23. A resolution directing staff to terminate the contract with Food and Shelter for operation of an emergency overnight shelter. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution. Motion to adopt, second. I'd like to recognize Mr. Anthony Pearnton.
I originally, I mean, I know it was a while ago, I originally addressed this resolution in the previous presentation. Essentially, this is, again, drafted to accommodate termination of the contract with the start date of January 15th of City Care in mind. And that's the date, that's why that date was selected, so there would be a continuous operation. A yes vote on this resolution would direct staff to effectuate termination of the contract by providing notice as provided in the contract with Food and Shelter. And we would do that to effectuate the transition with the new contract that you guys just voted on, so.
Thank you, sir. It's an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any public commenters?
Yes, Mayor, Diana Hutzel. After her is John Scamihorn.
Diana Hutzel, Ward Five. So, contracts are opportunities for lessons learned, so hopefully we'll do some of that. But I don't want to beat a dead horse, but council chose the housing-first approach, but the contract didn't require shelter residents to participate in the housing program. So whether we like it or not or agree with it or not, perception matters. Because of that and because of the fact that some found housing and some did not, there is a public perception that this is a long-term stay homeless hotel. That is just the reality of what it is for some. Observers of the shelter contract oversight meetings felt that personal relationships sometimes overshadowed performance reviews, so maybe that's something to look at. The contract lacked clear measurable goals and smart metrics, which made it difficult to evaluate shelter performance in a transparent and effective manner. That limited information about the shelter's performance to the public was, was vague, only fueling more doubt. Issues raised in the contract audit deepened public uncertainty and eroded trust. Again, public perception matters. And whether you agree or not, some also feel that the shelter services contract is directly linked to increase in homelessness and the rise in homeless-related crime. There's widespread awareness of the nearly 42% rise in homeless-related criminal offenses since 2022, and the number of homeless individuals arrested have also increased by 33% since 2022. And since it was mentioned, I'll just give a shout out to Major Vincent who contacted me so I could help the NPD, so thanks to him for doing that. And then there's ongoing problems with the contract and the shelter have severely undermined public confidence in your ability to, in your, what we perceive, what others and we perceive to be the, our city's ability to effectively manage the shelter contract. And unfortunately, this has bled through to other areas of money that's being donated for homeless purposes to include the continuum of care. Some are now wondering why we are giving the continuum of care $450,000 annually, which is actually 4.4 million over the past decade. And they're wondering if that too is contributing to the homelessness, especially when you talk about the point-in-time study, how different it is from the number of homeless that we have seen just on the arrest records. In 2022, 530 different homeless individuals were arrested. As of last Friday, the number's already reached 704 for this year. And yes, it is misdemeanors, it's, it's made felonies, it's all kinds of different things, but it's crime that the, that gets counted on the police blotter, so, thank you very
Excuse me, after him is Anthony Smith.
Dr. John Scamihorn, Ward One. I, I don't know how to add much to that, that was such an excellent presentation by Diane, but I want to reiterate that the populace does see that there's been massive incompetence in the administration of our friend's house by Food and Shelter. And so they definitely... And so they definitely have should have their contract terminated with prejudice, so to speak. That is, it's not an ordinary termination. So, thank you.
Do we have Anthony Smith? Trey Kirby?
I just had another question. When y'all running that food and shelter the last, like, two years, over the last five or six months, did y'all ever consider doing like a sit and lie? Deal, kind of like the City of Shawnee? I know you spoke about it about five months ago and doing it, and after I talked to Shawnee, they said it worked really, really good. Was that something Norman ever considered? That was just really, the question I left out, sorry about that.
Stephen Lett? Marguerite Larson? Christina Owen, I don't know if she came in. Stephen Ellis?
Steve Ellis, Ward four. All right, I'm, hope you vote for this. I think this is a good thing tonight, swapping food and shelter out for City Care and City Care in. Food and Shelter wasn't willing to run a shelter under the conditions that you wanted to impose. But they were willing to bridge the gap, and I think they deserve a lot of credit for that because they're essential for helping our neighbors who happen to be unhoused. But I think it's important that we recognize the good that Food and Shelter has done through their contract and the good that they are going to continue to do in working with City Care, because they're a vital part of our services to unhouse people in this community. They're notable for their willingness to treat unhoused folks as people with intrinsic value rather than a problem for people who have intrinsic value. They're worthy of the help that we give them. That's something that we've learned from Food and Shelter. And Norman is going to continue to need their leadership in this area as the sort of fear of the unhoused and the consequent hatred towards them rise. I hope and I believe that City Care will follow that lead. And I do think that Food and Shelter is one of the few institutions in our city who can claim to live up to what is mostly mythical sort of Oklahoma standard. And in return, they kind of get crazy conspiracies thrown at them, like you've heard tonight, sometimes even from the dais. Like that they're profiting from unhoused, which is ridiculous on its face, and claims about the unhoused as tourists are here because we're advertising our amenities for the unhoused. Councilmember Holman had it exactly right. You don't want to be unhoused in Norman. We treat the unhoused people here terribly, and it's a terrible place to be if you have to live outdoors. So I think it's important that the dais reflect on how important Food and Shelter has been and how they will continue to be for helping resolve issues with unhoused in our community. And remember, that's mostly issues for the unhoused. I think it's sort of pathetic that the slander that Food and Shelter has had to suffer. But those are the times we live in, unfortunately. But I hope everyone on the dais will reflect on the good service that they've done rather than try to throw them under the bus. Thank you.
Mayumi? Alex Lieb? Then Ben?
Hi, Mayumi Winler, Ward two. So something I'm thinking about is that we need more data. How often did Food and Shelter report on their numbers? Was it every month? Should we increase that to every two weeks or every week to see what kind of progress that they're making? On, you know, how many people are coming in, how many people are getting services to wherever they need to get services for? Like if they need, you know, IDs or if they need, you know, a way home or whatever? If we could increase the reporting frequency so we get more data to, you know, see if they're being effective? I think that would be an improvement. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Alex? Ben?
So this is really a question of, like, which direction you want to go in society? Because this is a kind of a, it sounds crazy, but you can use shelters to destroy capitalism if you want. So, for example, if you were to bring in, if you were to put, let's say, fifty shelters all across the city, and you distributed the damage equally over the entire city, you would collapse the real estate values and you would drive out all of the businesses. So housing prices go down, so now it's very affordable to anyone who's a drug addict or on welfare. And there are no jobs. So in essence, capitalism has been obliterated. Everyone's on welfare, the city is a giant slum. And there's a thriving gift economy and also lots of crime. And that condition is the condition under which humans evolved. Humans evolved in a primitive tribal communist society. And for thousands of years, we were forced to share. And if you had a tool, you had to share that tool. If you had seed corn, you had to share your seed corn. No one could invest, no one could create a farm. Technology was more or less stagnant for tens of thousands of years because of the the, the social standard that you had to share everything you had. It was called the tyranny of cousins. It's actually what it's called in anthropological literature, the tyranny of cousins, because your cousins would come in and they would steal your surplus. Sharing, people have this idea that, like, we should make people share. But if you look at the history of humanity, compelling people to share kept us from developing technologically for tens of thousands of years. Human nature wants certain things. Humans are biologically hardwired to have communist inclinations. It's why every teenager is kind of a socialist until they grow up and learn better. But human nature is wrong. Human nature constantly comes to the wrong conclusion. And people think that capitalism oppresses us, and they're right, it does oppress us. But consider what you're oppressing. You're oppressing a species of genocidal communist primates. And it forces us to work, it forces us to contribute. Every dollar you earn in a capitalist system, you earn by producing stuff other people need. It forces you to give back. That's not bad, that's good. And we should go towards the market, not away from it, not towards social.
Erin Casey? Chanel Rhodey? Mariah Holic? Roman Gray? Peyton Hefington, Zane Wooton, Cynthia Rogers? Got one. No, I'm sorry. Luigi?
He's gone.
He left. Rita Cohen? I believe she left. Jeanette Coker? Victoria?
Hi, I'm Victoria. I didn't know about your little clock before, I know about it now. So I do want to say that Food and Shelter, they do good things for people. I'm, I can't just bash them totally. They have some of their priorities mixed up. I do think that it would be a good idea if you guys maybe had a monitor to audit the new people, since you had a problem with that. And I think that they need to look at also the time, because even though people have night shelters, sometimes they inclement weather, you're putting people out at seven o'clock in the morning and it's forty degrees or less. And fifteen minutes outside, you could probably freeze to death. So give that one thought, please.
Paul Wilson?
Paul Wilson, still Ward one. I'm kind of torn with canceling the contract with Food and Shelter. I know it's necessary because of City Care coming in, so I'm okay with it. I did want to point out one thing that Councilmember Mahoney forgot to mention about November. The previous record for tornadoes in Oklahoma was twelve in November, which isn't over yet, well, hopefully we don't have anymore. We had thirty. So why would you want to live outside in Norman? So. The other thing I'm going to bring up that has been brought up several times is the vote of the people. You are correct. In 2020, we did vote against building a shelter. Just a few years ago, we also voted against building an arena. Less than ninety days ago, this, this body, by a vote of five to four, voted in favor of the Rock Creek Entertainment Tiff District. I supported that. I still do support it. So that's kind of hypocritical to say we don't want to build a shelter, but we want to build an entertainment district. When both failed to vote of the people. Now, we'll find out in February if the entertainment district passes this time. Because it is being put to a vote of the people. But as far as shelters go, they're a pivotal thing in the United States and, and worldwide. If you've never had to stay at a shelter, consider yourself blessed that you've been able to live a life not having to. There are several people that were here today, myself included, who have had to stay at a shelter. It's not an easy road. It's, it's not a glamorous life, to say the least. It really isn't. It, it, it digs at you. It, it makes you have to put your, your pride aside. But I'm pretty sure everybody has known at least one person in their life that has been homeless and that they've stayed at a shelter or stayed in a tent. So I'm glad that we're, we're moving on to City Care. Hopefully, I'm praying that they'll do just as good a job, if not better, than Food and Shelter. I always look for improvements. But that's all I got, guys.
Evan? Chelsea? And then Carlinda.
Chelsea Gravel, Ward four. I am for us detaching from Food and Shelter. They are terrible at record-keeping. They lie constantly and are constantly giving you false information on your spreadsheet from the beginning. I'm also very tired of reading all of the paperwork that goes along with that meeting. It would be lovely to get to see some different viewpoints and some different numbers being brought in. I'd also like to address why people wouldn't want to live here. There's three thousand homeless people in Alaska. Do you think that would be worse than living in Oklahoma and being homeless? I have no distaste or anger, or I don't feel any fear from the homeless people that are in our community. I don't wish them any bad to come to them. I don't sneer at them whenever I'm walking down the street. I don't think bad things about the people. They're just people in my community that are hurting. Instead, I see a community of people that are addicted to drugs and alcohol and addicted to a lifestyle of freedom. A lifestyle where they don't have to choose what they're doing. Instead, they get their thousand-dollar check that they pick up at our post office. This can be looked into, you can verify everything that I have to say, as I have verified it myself. They pick up their check at the post office and they take their thousand dollars to our drug dealers. And drugs are so easily found here in Norman that we can throw a rock and find them. I mean, it's everywhere. There's six drug houses that I know of. There's a house right next to the railroad tracks, that is that bright orange house on Acres. They're a drug house. This is amply available in our city right now. And not having a provider like Food and Shelter in place where they are selling drugs to our community, they are allowing people who are sex offenders on their property. There's a tent city happening over there for this poor community on Reed Street, who also, unfortunately, should sue the city for what you have done. There is a interview with April herself, representing Food and Shelter, because this is against Food and Shelter, not a person, where she came before the planning committee in 2015 or 16 and guaranteed that the people of Reed would not experience any of this. She guaranteed that her services would not affect our city. But Food and Shelter has destroyed our community. And that is what the problem is. The problem is poor communication skills, a lack of being able to properly organize the data that is coming in. We can look at other places like Kansas right now. They brought in a shelter, they're having to up their psychiatric unit and their jails. That is what we're going to be doing next.
Carlinda?
Carlinda Gravel, Ward four. I do agree with going ahead and stopping the contract with Food and Shelter on the shelter. But I'd also like to take a moment to kind of reflect back on what got us to where we are now. That first shelter on Webster, it's my understanding, the first city-run shelter that we had, that Michelle Evans was an employee of the city that ran it. The first funding was thirty-eight thousand dollars was taken from our city budget as well to, from our police budget, I'm sorry, our police budget to fund that shelter. And that's my understanding that that's what was used. COVID money was used to run the second one, that was by Michelle Evans, who just suddenly decided she had had enough. That was right before there was a drug shooting at the Comanche Shelter. That was actually due to, someone had reached out to me, they were there at the time. It was a drug situation that was the reason for the shooting at the Comanche Shelter. So we decided that we were going to start looking for another location for this wonderful clientele that creates a nice little drug shooting in our neighborhood. And we were going to, instead of putting it on the edge, we're going to put it right in the center of our downtown, because that's a nice little location there, in case there's another drug shooting, we sure wouldn't want to miss it. So the other thing is that whenever we were putting that RFP out and Salvation Army actually responded, who, we've had really good results in our city with Salvation Army. A lot of us didn't even know what all they do, because they're just kind of tucked in there and they're not out in the world causing trouble in our city, and we just didn't even know all the wonderful things they do. But it's my understanding that one of the reasons, don't know if this could actually be put on any kind of city documents, because I don't know if that would be legal, but that they were not allowed because they were a faith-based organization, and that had something to do with the way the RFP was put out. There couldn't be a faith-based. Did you know that Rachel Freeman, who's running City Care, has a list of faith-based resources, books and different things to encourage people to read for a faith-based way of looking at homelessness and encouraging that, or how to solve that, looking at faith-based ways? Is that a factor? I don't know. It was a factor, so that's what kind of got us here to begin with. So I am in agreement. It's unfortunate that Salvation Army, who's done such a tremendous job, who came forward with the first RFP, were not selected, because I have a really strong feeling that we wouldn't be in the place that we are right now if that were the case.
Yeah, we're done with public comment?
Councilmember Grant?
Yes. This question is for City Manager Pyle, just to address... Is it on? Misinformation in our community. The Comanche Street Shelter, that shooting didn't happen during operating hours, did it?
I believe it happened before the shelter opened, as shelter security staff was coming unseen to start their shift.
And was that a drug-related incident, or was that mental health violence?
Yeah. We understood it to be a relationship issue between two individuals, one of them staying at the shelter, the other one had only been in town for a few days.
I was going to say, the family of the guy that got shot, he was there to help. He wasn't there to engage with her.
Because the security guard received some wounds, and then the victim, the initial target of the shooting, so there were a couple of victims in that particular exercise.
Okay. I also find the comment about Salvation Army to sound, to ring false. They applied for the RFP, but I believe they didn't get it, because they weren't willing to meet us on what we had outlined in our initial contract with Food and Shelter. And the reason Food and Shelter got it was because they said they could provide what we were asking in the RFP. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case. Mr. Parentin, you're younger than me. I hope your brain remembers back a couple of years in that particular RFP.
So, from, if you look at the proposals, I think the issue that was the most relevant was Salvation Army didn't actually increase the capacity of shelter beds that would currently be available. I think it was just increasing some of the staffing they had, and we were looking, I think, primarily for an increased number of beds available. And we also wanted it to be operated, I think, on a, like, it was for a permanent shelter. And they were more concerned, I think their proposal was more to do about expanding their operation, but not actually expanding the number of beds available. So, instead, we went with a proposal that sought to have a new location with additional beds to add to the total capacity within the community.
So, nowhere was it about religious materials being offered?
If, I'm almost positive, we probably sent the RFP directly to them as an applicant to suggest they apply.
Okay. I have no more questions. Thank you for clearing things up.
Thank you.
I'll just say this. I'm appreciative of Food and Shelter stepping up and being able to initially provide what we had outlined. There were many conversations with them and their board, and I'm sorry that we came to an impasse, but they are still in our community, and if City Care is their model, I hope by City Care being in our community, that that strengthens the relationship between those two entities, and maybe lifts everyone's votes. So, anyways, I'll be voting to end this, but I just wanted to put that out there, that it wasn't for lack of trying, and the direction that we're headed, I think, is helpful to everyone all around. Thank you.
Councilmember Montoya?
Okay, let's see. So, Food and Shelter, I definitely appreciate their efforts for stepping up and operating the shelter. What they typically do is they, you know, they operate the tiny homes at McAllen Village. My book club has sponsored one of the tiny homes since its inception, and we have had a wide variety of people who have experienced homelessness. They experienced homelessness because of mental illness. They experienced homelessness because of financial difficulty. They experienced homelessness because they were elderly and their social security check couldn't keep up with the increase of the cost of housing. And we got involved, my book club, we got involved, because one of my book club members, her brother, he struggled with mental illness, no, not mental illness, he struggled with substance abuse. And he got himself clean. He, his name is Brad Pennington, he wasn't not only a brother, he was a son, he was a father. He went down to the Comanche Shelter to simply go down there and help people, and he got shot in the face by somebody he did not know. So, I want to make it real clear that the individual that was shot down there, he had gotten himself clean, he had gotten himself a job, he was housed, and he went down there to help people. And he was innocently shot down there while trying to help people. So, I just would really hope that everyone here and watching online listens and clarifies that rumor of it being a relationship, or whatever it was, because that is not the truth. And that's all I have to say.
I think that's it. Just trying to give them a few seconds to get back.
We're just going to wait for the mayor to come back to the seat.
I'll go ahead and make the statement. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Councilmember Holman?
About Food and Shelter for Friends, operating in Norman for over 40 years. You know, they didn't start as a nonprofit before there were any homeless individuals in Norman. They didn't just get together and say, hey, let's start a nonprofit to address homelessness issues, even though there are none here. The homelessness issue existed before Food and Shelter for Friends, and as I mentioned before, Salvation Army opened on North Porter in the late 1960s to respond to an issue that already existed. And that's the same thing with this shelter. 2017 and 18, after Food and Shelter for Friends moved to Reed Avenue, there was no longer an overnight shelter in the winter in downtown Norman, but there had been for 40 years. Or at that time, it's 1983 to 2017, so the response, so the city, city council, we got emails, phone calls from business owners, from property owners, saying, why don't you guys, when are you going to do something about the people sleeping on the streets, in front of our businesses, and on the sidewalks, and on the benches? Why aren't you going to do something about that? Nobody else is doing it. When is the city going to step up and do something about this? So, we did. We had an empty library next door that's 52,000 square feet, so we opened a winter-warming shelter. And then we discovered, oh, wow, yeah, it's really not great to be outside in Oklahoma all year round, pretty much, and there is a demand for people needing a safe place to sleep at night. And so, again, I just want to reiterate that the city, funding the operation of a overnight shelter is in response to public outcry that we were seeing in 2017 and 18, especially after people froze to death on Main Street. And again, I just say, how good does that look for our community? If people are freezing to death and there are dead bodies on Main Street? It's not a very good look for business, it's not a good look for anybody, and it shows that our community doesn't care. But we do care, and that's why the council then decided to start a shelter, or at least to fund one. We tried operating it ourselves, discovered that wasn't the best fit, and went with an external operator, which is what we're doing again now. So, again, if the city wasn't being asked to do something, if any other entity was stepping up to do it, then the government wouldn't need to. And that's always been my stance about the purpose of government, is if the, if nobody else can, will, or should address a problem or an issue, then the government has to. If there is nobody else, it's going to do it. And the government, we spend a lot of money on corporate welfare, on Norman Economic Development Coalition, to attract businesses. Is it okay for us to spend public tax dollars, as long as it's for a private business to benefit? I think there needs to be some, if we don't want to give out money for this, then we shouldn't give out money for anything, not specifically a city government function. Capitalism and private business, they can stand on their own, right? What do they need our help for? If the University North Park Entertainment District is such a wonderful deal, then why do they need public assistance and financing? Shouldn't they be able to get private investment to cover that entire thing? I think so. And so, taxpayers, Norman operates on sales tax revenue. Everybody in this city that buys anything is a sales taxpayer. Four generations of my family have been paying taxes in this city for 100 years. So, when people say, I don't want my tax dollars going to stuff, well, everybody in this city could identify something that this city of government spends money on that they don't agree with. And you can identify stuff at the state and the federal government that money is spent on that we don't agree with. The defense budget of the United States is almost a trillion dollars. There's a lot of people in this country that don't think that we should be spending that much money on that, but we do. That we shouldn't be funding wars and always getting into conflicts all over the world, but we do. So, this idea that your tax dollars is all that matters, when we live in a society where everybody pays taxes, again, if you go to the store and you buy a stick of gum, you're paying sales tax on that stick of gum, and that's going to the city coffers. So, everybody in this city is a taxpayer that spends any money, anywhere, at any business. And so, I just want to clarify some of that and provide some perspective that we should all think about. If we don't want to give government money out for this, then we shouldn't give it out to anything that's not an official city government function, including economic development. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. This is an opportunity, this is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and are limited to three minutes or less. And clerk, do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
Yes, sir. Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel again. So, some additional recommendations and thoughts. It was mentioned by council on the dais tonight about homeless drop-offs in Norman. You have the ability to pass an ordinance that prohibits the unsanctioned relocation of homeless individuals from other communities to Norman, with stiff penalties for violations. It would protect local resources for residents, encourage neighboring communities to address their own homelessness issues, safeguard both the vulnerable homeless individuals who get carted around, and our community. Santa Cruz, California actually implemented a similar ordinance in September. Perhaps you might look at that as a possible model. Also, in oversight meetings, we've heard about patient, homeless patient dumping from facilities. I don't know if you're aware, but that violates the Emergency Medical Treatment and Labor Act. Violators face fines of at least $50,000 per violation and potential exclusion from Medicare participation. It's a, while enforcement is a federal responsibility, certainly council can look and should take steps to prevent Norman from being a destination for such inhumane practices. We must protect both the vulnerable individuals and the community from this harmful practice. Earlier tonight, I talked about implementing inclusionary zoning policies. It would help expand the affordable housing supply and ensure equitable access to housing opportunities. But you know, the reality is that Norman has some of the most expensive real estate in Oklahoma. That was mentioned tonight, too, by, I believe, the dais. Average home is $300,000 in Norman, the average rent, just under $1,500. It's expensive to live here. You don't have, council does not have the power or the resources to fund everyone's desire to live here. I think by now, we probably all realize that the era of large federal subsidies, such as ARPA, CARES, and COVID funding, is over for at least the next four years. We're going to have to live with the means that we have, because I think once they start doing that research to find out what is too much, they will not give much in the meantime. The responsibility to manage and achieve that, the ability of where you live falls upon the individual if they're able. Norman will never be an affordable place to live for those who are either unable to or unwilling to adjust their circumstances to match the cost of living here. It's not a harsh statement, it's just really the reality of the situation. I can't even live where I necessarily want to live. Thank you.
Trey Kirby?
Trey Kirby, word five. Everybody acts like it should be a luxury to live here. I can remember at points in times, I've worked two to three jobs, maybe slept four hours at night. I can remember when I first started my first job, I was making like $4.25 an hour digging up wellheads. Then I got my hazmat license, moved up, then I got my electrician license, got, offered a job in Dallas to build skyscrapers. They paid for my college, they paid for me to be in college, they paid for me to move there. Came back, got my plumbing license. At no point in time, nobody ever really gave me anything. I went out and I earned it. I looked at what could improve my future, and I went and I achieved it. I got married at 18, my daughter was three, because I married an older woman than I was, and I raised her. She is now 30, has her own house. My son is now 21, works at OU. All this was because I taught them good ethics and hard work. I was fortunate enough, my mom worked at DHS. I know they offer a lot of programs. One of the things they offer is you can go in there, if you don't have the ability to support yourself, they'll do kind of like a diagnostics, figure out where you're at education-wise and all that. And then they offer three different services, one's like medical coding, one's like an RNA or something like that, and one's something else now that they've added. These programs have always been available. I was wondering, do we ever push them programs to our homeless? Like, when they come in and they need help, do we ever send them on over to DHS to see if they could profit from one of them, uh, programs? Another thing I seen was Leanne Bryan at OU in the housing area, had a guy named Roy work for them. Wasn't really all there. Pretty boy, senior Elvis, show you his little cars, carried him around, you know, in his fanny pack, but was always really nice. And he always had somebody to help him, to guide him to a project, and OU paid him. The OU Credit Union, every two weeks when he'd come in, they had people who would help him organize his money, how they needed, so that he could go pay his bills, because his mom set that up that way. So, some people don't have good parenting, they got abandoned when they were young, they got adopted, they had a crackhead for a mom, you know, so nobody ever taught them nothing. Have we ever offered any type of adulting classes? I know it sounds weird if you came from a stable home, but have we put forth an adulting class? It's like I was saying about the City and Line ordinance. Doing that by itself helped another community solve part of the homeless, because people didn't seem to linger. And it's like, kind of like she's pointing out, if you hold something over somebody's head, they can never feel like there were something, whereas if you just hand them up or help them out, or give them a soft, kind voice, it might inspire them to want to go be successful, or even try, because they've been beat down so bad that their...
Marguerite Larson. Christina Owen. Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, word four. This has been a kind of a crazy night for moral arguments. I really felt for Councilmember Nash, for instance, when he was wrestling with some of the issues in his comments on the new contract item. And it's true that sometimes ethics can be hard. So, I'm going to do something that will probably piss some people off here. Let me put on my philosophy professor hat. This is what I do on my day job, right? And I want to say a couple of things that I help, that I think will help people sort through these issues. This is not a deep dive, I've only got three minutes, so here's a very, very shallow skate through some of these kinds of issues. One of the major issues at issue tonight involves social-political philosophy. What is a government and what is its proper role? So, on the standard US view, so I'm not going to necessarily stump for this, but I think our common understanding of this is that governments are of, by, and for the people. The government is supposed to be us. And if we have moral obligations in some fashion, then it... then it seems clear that our organized political community does as well, especially if they're general obligations. Governments are limited in what they can do, but they're not so limited that we can't do things that are necessary for the general welfare and the common good. If we can tax people for roads, we can spend taxes on keeping people alive. I don't believe there's any political philosophy that simultaneously accepts governments but limits the powers of those governments to something like mere infrastructure or that everybody gets a personal veto on what their taxes are about. If you believe in government authority, there's going to be government authority. And this, you know, doing a homeless shelter is pretty clearly within government authority. The second, probably more important but less obvious issue is who's the we? Do unhoused folks count or are they of lesser value? Again, I think the standard US view, albeit one that has mostly been honored in the breach, to be honest, is that if you're here, you count, right? Citizenship is one person, one vote. Everybody is supposed to count for one in the calculus of the common good. So contra the sort of social Darwinism that we've heard echoes of tonight, a purely selfish system of social organization is self undermining. And people have sort of been implicitly assuming tonight that there's a we, which is, I don't know, the people who come to city council meetings, and there's the them. The people, maybe they're from out of town, but they live on the streets. And that kind of thinking is really antithetical to the American way. Now, you might have a problem with the American way, maybe you've got some other kind of argument to go.
Mayumi.
Hello again, Mayumi Winler, word two. I don't remember which document this was in, but I had a couple of questions. I think it was for the CIP thing. So there's this one section, planning for the new EOC with the amateur radio club. Lack of proper involvement afforded to the EM division throughout the process. Technical planning on some issues costs twice the normal had the guidance from the EM division been followed. Why aren't you listening to the people who are, who need to be listened to? That's one thing. Another clip from that document was the current number of at fault vehicle collisions per calendar year. 2022, there were seven, 2023, there were 11, 2024, so far, 31. What's wrong with people's driving? Why, you know, why are we having that many accidents? Because that also costs money. And another thing is, I don't know when that document was updated, but there were two cows at the animal shelter on Saturday, and they were not listed on that document. That's all.
Ben.
So there's this thing called an opportunity cost, which is basically, if you spend money on one thing, you can't spend it on another. If you spend time on one thing, you can't spend it on another. So we spend an awful lot of time talking about these 50 people at a friend's house. And we ignore the incredibly important work that we need to do, which is to radically overhaul the zoning code in order to streamline development. During the previous issue, one of the previous issues, somebody wanted a cap of seven stories on a building that we were looking at. And that is exactly the opposite of what needs to happen. If you, I was doing some back of the envelope math, and if you were to build that to 30 stories, you could house 1,000 people in that one structure. And I want to propose an ordinance. I drafted it, it's very rough, I'm not a lawyer. I tried to mimic language as much as possible, but it would basically streamline the process of reclassifying to higher density. It would create a reclassification matrix, and it would give developers the automatic right to upgrade to a higher density if they followed certain limits and requirements. So is there somebody I can give this to?
And that should give you a detailed idea of what
Johnna Beth Jupe. Erin Casey, Chanel Rhodey, Mariah Holick, Roman Gray, Peyton Hefington, Zane Wooton, Cynthia Rogers.
So since Steve gave you the philosophy view, the role of government, I'll put on my professor hat and give you what we talk about when I teach public economics and public finance. And there we talk about government having three roles, equity, efficiency, and stability goals that they might try to achieve. And sometimes they conflict. Because if we are addressing equity or homelessness, then that might get in the way with efficiency rules. And then we also talk about when does it make sense in economic justification for government interfering or stepping into markets? And one of those is when there's externalities, somebody's behavior, transactions impacts others positively or negatively. And I think we see when it comes to homelessness, there's definitely negative spillovers that the community feels. We also talk about public goods, so goods that have broad, general benefits to the community that no individual would be willing to pay enough to provide the right amount. But collectively, we can. I think this is another issue where addressing homelessness is a public good because it benefits economic activity, our emotional activity in the community. So aside from moral issues, I could give you lots of economic reasons about addressing when there are market failures. And clearly, people not being able to afford rent and feed their children or themselves is a market failure because not everybody has equal access to feeding themselves, getting jobs, getting education, being healthy. So that's my hat off to government engagement and why there's a justification for stepping into helping with the shelter issue.
Luigi. Rita. Cohen. Floyd Carroll. Jeanette Cooker, I just saw her walk out. Caleb. I'm sure I'm going to say this wrong. Aria S., I'm sorry, sir.
16-107. B, however, open burning may be conducted if no public nuisance is or will be created for. Six, the burning of hydrocarbons by atmospheric flares when no other means of disposal is practical. What does that word atmospheric mean to you? 16-107, open burning prohibited. B, however, open burning may be conducted if no public nuisance is or will be created for. Three, campfires and other fires used solely for recreational or ceremonial purposes. So a fire that's created solely for recreational purposes, campfires or other fires, would be permissible under this exception. But if that fire is only for unceremonious warmth, then it wouldn't meet this exception. What do you have against those who are cold? And what do you have against those who do not have any food? Because that same exception continues, or for outdoor, non-commercial preparation of food. So if you prepare a fire and you cook food on it, then it meets the exception. But if you have no food to put on that fire, then it doesn't meet the exception.
Paul Wilson, still word one. I'm going to flip the script a little bit tonight. I'm going to go a little more positive than we've had tonight. With the holidays coming up, we know what happens on December 31st. We all made that wonderful New Year's resolution. And 90% of the resolutions out there, they don't make it past January. But I have a challenge, I like bringing challenges to the dais, and this will go for anybody in the audience, too. Imagine if we all did one random act of kindness a day. Every one of us in this room touches one person that we don't know and do one random act of kindness. Imagine what kind of place Norman can be if that spread throughout the city. I'll be straight honest, I witnessed it about a week ago. I was at the West Side Walmart, of all places, going through a self-check. There was somebody there that was buying food. They ran out of money. Before I could even jump in, because I was willing to, the clerk watching the self-check said, how much are you short? The clerk at Walmart making $15 an hour asked him, how much are you short? They were short four bucks. It's not a lot. I bet you any one of us could bring $4 to the table right now. But for a Walmart employee, he couldn't have been more than 20. He's probably in his teens. To bring $4 out to help a random person, he had no clue who he was. God, imagine how life would be. I'm sure we've all seen videos of where people go through a drive-through, and you have to pay it forward, domino effect. You pay for years, you pay for the person behind you. That first person, what happens typically, it barrel rolls backwards. I've had it happen to me at Sergio's. They were having it, we just went and ran tonight, and somebody started paying the person's table ahead of them. Well, they got to us. Oh, your bill's been taken care of. I was like, oh, cool, who could I help? I was the last, me and my wife were the last customers. There was nobody after us. But I, but I went up to the server and said, here's 40 bucks. If nobody else comes in tonight, I want you to split it amongst all the employees. You know what it made me feel like? It made me feel pretty good. When you help a random person and don't care about their race.
Evan.
Oh, wow, Evan Dunn, Ward 7, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I'm so full of thanks and gratitude. I'm thankful for this podium. I'm thankful that we have institutions that are promotional of people utilizing their First Amendment rights. And a lot of people don't. Yeah, a lot of people are terrified of their governments, they're terrified of the concentrations of power. And they implore people to turn on each other. And that erodes trust, that erodes the moral affirmation that we can use to build stronger communities. I sent you all an email, having copied and pasted some of the emails that I wrote to Senator Mullen and Senator Langford. And in it, I was advocating for not the the total erasure of our assistance to Israel, but a halt on further provisions of funds to buy bombs, to further exploit the hardships that the Gazans are going through. And, you know, like Paul said, it felt good to stand up and be counted. It felt good to just send that email and know that I did something. And I think that the experience for people, I have this idea, what if we had a section of miscellaneous opinions that was only like 15 seconds, 30 seconds long? And we get people up here, and you remember the movie Dead Poets Society? There's a scene where Robin Williams, he gets all the kids up there and they kick a soccer ball while they're reading a quote, and it's really powerful for them. And I think public speaking can be that. It's the way in which you can actualize all of the perceptions and all of the essence within you to a singularity. And my dream is for Norman to be a community of people who are all capable of
Chelsea.
Go to Instagram.
Chelsea Gravel, word four. Any community that does not provide a shelter is allowed to drop off homeless people in Norman because we offer a shelter. Many have eyewitnessed this at Embark. If you would like to speak with anybody, you're more than welcome to make a post on Norman Neighbors, and we will approve it, as long as it's not a political post, as our page is not political. So what came first, the chicken or the egg? The resources or the need for resources? The homeless or the homeless providers? We have homeless here, so we must help them or appear unkind by doing nothing. How did they hear about Norman? Norman is advertised because we offer services. People believe that places that offer services are a more friendly environment. Did they come here because they heard we have places for them to stay? A neighboring city, the neighboring cities are legally allowed to bring the homeless in their community to the closest shelter provider. And now with the laws that are in place, when an officer makes contact with a homeless individual, they are required by law to offer them shelter assistance. Did they come because we offer meals? They were here, so they eat the free meals and use the services we have, well, the ones they want. So why did they come here? We are an inclusive community. We have lots of drugs for lifestyle choices that they choose. We do not judge anyone in our community for living a different lifestyle than ourselves. So we welcomed them here. They were doing drugs before they came here, and they can continue to use them while they are here. Oklahoma is facing a true drug problem, so drugs are easy to find here. The homeless crisis is an outcome of the opioid crisis. So having drugs brings the homeless into communities like ours that check all of the boxes. How many more people will be brought here and now that we, if we continue to offer a shelter? To answer that, you would need to know how many more suffer from an addiction. And to point, and to that point, how they became homeless, and how to offer city, and how many other cities check all of the boxes like Norman does. Addiction is a true disease, a disease of the mind and the body. An addiction is what makes the decisions and choices for this population. The government is at fault for the opioid epidemic, for the asylums being in use, shutting down and having no oversight, for doctors giving out prescriptions left and right for substances that are more addictive than the population could handle, and for offering very little in a form of alternatives when they stopped handing out these prescriptions, forcing people to turn to street drugs. No one addicted to substances needs to be embarrassed or feel a need to hide this. They shouldn't be sleeping outside or in encampments or hiding in the woods like animals. We have decided to be an inclusive community. This is what that looks like now. Now we must help the folks that have been drawn to Norman. We replace lobotomies with opioids. Thank you.
Carlinda.
Carlinda Gravel, Ward 4. Let me start by clearing a few things up. I do feel for your loss. I am sorry that there has been someone who has experienced pain as a result of the situation that occurred at the shelter. I do want to reiterate that the person that reached out to me was actually someone who worked at the facility and was under the impression that the person doing the shooting, there were actually drugs involved in them doing the shooting. I was not there specifically reliant on the person who reached out and talked to me about the incident. They reached out to me. I did not go hunt them down. So, not knowing the full circumstances, as apparently others here are unaware of that, I am sorry for your loss. So, I'm sorry that you were experiencing pain as a result of that. I also would like to clarify that it was a elected city council member that told me that the reason Salvation Army was rejected was because they are faith-based and will not allow transgender people to stay there. So, want to clarify that before we get started. I do believe that there have probably been some misconceptions entirely. When we started coming to council, it was because I had an intruder, and he took all my safety away. And I had my first crime in the city of Norman that I felt like anything could have been done to me that night. Me and Chelsea, we were the only ones there. Y'all know that. We've been here before. We came here to talk to you about the crime we were experiencing. We came here to make an appeal to you that we were experiencing an abnormally high level of crime in my neighborhood, and we didn't know why. We had no idea what was going on with shelters and encampments and all the stuff you guys have been dealing with for years. We're busy living our lives, walking the dog, going, wait, what's happening? Someone's shooting up in front of us every time we walk the dog now. We're not going that route anymore. And then all of a sudden, we were just bombarded. We started looking at what is happening in our city. That's when we realized the things that we've been bringing to you. We want vulnerable homeless to get the help they need. We want criminals to be held accountable for the same crimes that they commit with the same repercussions, whether you're housed or unhoused. We would all agree on that. Crime is crime. Drugs are drugs. Things that need to be dealt with. If you see someone who's having a mental health crisis and they're in immediate danger of harming themselves or others, absolutely, I'd wait for someone to come and please help this person. We want people to get help. That's why we're here. We're not just talking about the 52 at the shelter. We're talking about the ones on the NPD criminal records that we are experiencing.